Hi, I'm going to ask everyone to please be seated so we can get going. Good evening, welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's regular meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, and this is our 7:00 PM regular meeting. Please be advised that there are assisted listening devices over at the table in the back of the room for anyone who wishes to use them. And now our city, in just a moment, I will ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call.
All right, Councilmember Hoxey, Councilmember G.
Here.
Vice Mayor, um, gosh, so sorry, I'm puzzled. And Mayor Malkani.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Councilmember Riley has an excused absence tonight. Could everyone please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, in our order of business, is item C, adoption of agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council staff has no changes to the agenda, but we will have a comment on the consent calendar and item on the consent calendar.
Okay. Then do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Item D is items for the good of the city, and though there are many good things happening in the city, we don't have any items listed on this agenda item tonight. That takes us to item E, which is public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members on items that are not on tonight's agenda. In addition, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when the item is taken up. And so I know we have a couple, at least three speaker cards that have indicated they want to speak on tonight's during public forum. And following that, I will call those, and then if anyone else would like to address the council at public forum, they can do so. So the first public forum item I have is actually, the name is No Name Stated Number One. So whoever that is, you are welcome to come and address council.
Members of council, thank you very much. I'm more or less speaking on, it's not on the agenda, but on the Southwood Valley. I gotta tell you, I don't understand how that item was ever on, on your no consent calendar. That's, that's not a small item. That changes people's lives. You're looking to spend $550,000 and you don't want public comment on that? Whoever put together the agenda, I'm not saying what you did is unauthorized or illegal, but it is tone deaf entirely. You don't fool with people's housing and their biggest investment and just say, what the heck? We're going to fill this valley in with what we want. And that's after seven or eight years ago, this thing crashed and burned. I'd like to know, and maybe you'll discuss it when it comes up on the agenda, what has changed in seven years? Emmanuel Ursu, who was previously the planning manager, was running that project for a private developer and never got anywhere. I don't, say what you will about Mr. Ursu, he knew what he was doing. If he couldn't get that project through, is, is $550,000? Are we so flush with money that you can burn that? On going over a project that was killed seven or eight years ago? I think it's despicable what you're doing. I just don't understand it. Assuming you go through this, because I gotta tell you, when I read the agenda, it just smacked as a railroad, because that's how you run a railroad. You just jam through, let something get its own life, because you've now spent $550,000 on it. After it crashes and burns the second time, who on this board is going to resign because they were foolish? Who on the city payroll is going to be fired for burning $550,000? Where is the responsibility going to be? And you wanted to get this started without any public comment? Shame on you, shame on all of you.
Okay, next for our public forum, we have Owen Murphy, who would like to speak on Southwood Canyon as well.
Thank you. Before I comment on Southwood.
Hold on one second, I just want to reset your time.
Okay.
So you have the full time.
Yeah, before I comment on Southwood, I just want to thank the city council, Senator Tim Grayson, any and all parties who successfully saved Arinda from the clutches of SB 79. It's appreciated, it's noticed, and it'll be remembered. Regarding Southwood, I would add not a whole lot to the previous comments. This was, this, this whole thing was discussed seven, eight, nine years ago in detail. It was documented. It's a geological nightmare, along with a number of other issues in that area. A house fell into that canyon. Anyway, I'm sure there's, there's a lot of material that's been submitted to you. Hope you've had a chance to scan it, if not read it, because everything was well documented at that time, and I continue to support the decision that was made then. Not to be entirely negative, I would suggest three areas for you to look at if you're going to spend some money for development in the city. One is the Fairs Building, okay? We could have been celebrating a decade of a successful Montessori school at that site that would have enlivened the whole neighborhood. Could have and should have done that. That didn't happen. Dozens of Arinda families would have benefited. Instead, we still have the rat-infested Hulk sitting there next to three restaurants. I don't know who benefits from that. Maybe some incentive for the owner of that property would be a better way to spend money. A second area would be the BART lot, owned by Caltrans, I know, controlled to an extent by BART. 25% of that physical landmass used for parking should be looked at for something else. Call it an island in the stream, call it what you want, but working from home is here to stay. BART reliability, BART safety, and probably soon BART frequency are all headed in a wrong direction. That land can be used for something, 25% or so, I'm just picking a number, maybe a third. And lastly, again, try to incentivize Caltrans again to do something with the property that's up near the defunct Shakespeare Theater. That area is contaminated, I understand that, but that's man-made. That's not a geological problem, that can be cleaned up, it's just an issue of money. Southwood Canyon, geological, it's not going to change. It's like San Francisco building high rises on Treasure Island while the island sinks every year, stupid. So that's really all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, and I have a couple folks who have indicated that they, agenda item F6, but have also checked the public forum box. You can speak either in public forum or there will likely be a request to pull item F6 from the consent calendar. So it is up to you, you're welcome to speak now, or you're welcome to speak later. The next person I have is Judy Eben, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
Hello, thank you for letting me give you my opinions and my insight into the valley. Judy Eben, and I've lived on Tahoe's Road for 51 years. So I've looked at the complicated history that the valley has and wanted to just briefly share some things with you. First of all, the land is unstable. And on one geological report that I read, it said that Arinda, California, had suffered more landslide, individual property damage over the hundred-year period, last hundred years of that period, than any other community in the USA. So that gives you a real indication that we have a problem here. Most of the, most of the big slide problems were the homes around Tahoe's and Bates. Over the years, some of them slid, some, one was moved. One even on Muth was stopped during construction, and that lot was vacant for decades. And of course, wildlife is another big concern. A neighbor has been posting all kinds of animals going through that valley at night. And of course, during the day too, there are a lot of resident animals there, and I'm sure a lot that are just kind of moving through, so they should be considered. Another thing is evacuation. If these houses are built, how is that going to affect the evacuation plans, which we've heard so many negative things about the way it stands now? And of course, traffic would be affected in our neighborhood. Tahoe's is one of the main access routes to the freeway. So in an emergency, that would be very important, that that was as clear as possible. And let's see, the other thing I wanted to mention, oh, Tahoe's was closed during one of those slides at the bottom of the hill. So imagine if we needed a big evacuation to the freeway at that point. I guess my other complaint is that we weren't informed about everything that's been going on about this project until Friday. So that hasn't given us much time to get our act together, but we're still very serious and very sincere about having you look at all the right things. The general plan is another thing that I'm concerned about, because they had mentioned, you know, they had limited in that the valley to be 10 acres rather than the full 43 for construction. And I don't know if anybody's read that, but I think that's, oops, I'm done. Okay. Anyway, we hope that you can help keep Arinda semi-verbal and peaceful and natural, like the general plan seems to indicate it should be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, the next speaker card that is selected, both public forum and agenda item. Again, you could speak either now or later, as you wish, Chris Neal.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for being here. I'm very impressed with the attendance. They must be concerned about something. And last time I was here, I think there was one other person. So I appreciate, it sounds like they're interested. Well, this is a very difficult subject, and I'm not going to talk on, this is my public forum commentary. It's not my commentary later on. So I'm going to talk later on about the issue at hand. But I think I'm going to talk, first of all, about one of the most important things that we should be concerned about right now. And I think it's an award for someone that's been very, very important. And I think that person has really made a contribution to our city and has been very effective in communicating with the neighborhood, as well as the city council. And I think that person probably warrants some kind of a special contribution. I don't know whether it's a plaque that the city council deems appropriate or whatever. But the person I'm referring to, of course, is Sherri Smith. Would you stand up, Sherri, so everybody knows who you are? Because there's a lot of people here that have never been here before, and they don't know Sherri Smith, who's been around here a long time. And she's made an enormous contribution to the city of Arinda, the folks that are here, the folks that are here, and the city council itself. So that's my main message. It can have flawed. The rest of the, my, my personal agenda here will be covered under the section that allows me to speak. And I'm just going to say right now that the outcome of that session will be you will force the contractor to rebid. I'm just going to say that right now, because there's all kinds of issues where the city did not act properly in informing what the, what the situation is with Southwood Valley, including the geometry, including the public input, including what your own planning department said about the previous development. So I'm just worrying, I'm just informing you before, and my time's up, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I do have some other speaker cards, but they are all for item F6. So is there anyone else here who would like to speak during the public forum section of the agenda? Okay.
Can I have one other comment? Or is that, no, okay.
No, but, but I do have your speaker card here for item F6.
Right, but I'm going to speak during session two, but not on the subject that I discussed.
Okay. I'm going to, if there are any, one last time, is there anyone else, any members of the public that would like to speak during public forum who have not had an opportunity to speak? Okay, seeing none, I have no other speaker cards for public forum, so we're going to close public forum. That takes us to our consent calendar. The consent calendar is, section of the agenda consists of items that are voted on and acted on in one motion, unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. And we have had several requests to speak on item F6 and including some, some written public comment that we received prior to the meeting. So we're going to, I want to request that we pull that from the consent calendar. Other than that, do we have any changes to the consent calendar?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council staff is requesting to pull item F3 from tonight's agenda. The city received some late correspondence, very late correspondence, and we wanted an opportunity to review that correspondence and be able to properly brief the council on the matter.
Okay. Okay, so item F3 is being removed from the consent calendar at this point.
From the agenda.
I mean, from the agenda.
Uh huh.
So do we have a motion to adopt consent calendar items F1, F2, F4, F5, and F7 through F9?
Awesome. Go, please go ahead. So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. And now I believe we would take up item F6.
Honorable Mayor, before we do that, if there's any members of the public that are here to speak on F3, we should probably take that.
Okay.
Feedback.
Oh, so, um. So before we move to F6, I will call item F3. Item F3, I will identify as the Housing Element Implementation Ordinance 25-04, Ordinance 25-05, Resolution 5225A and Resolution 5225B regarding amendments to the general plan and zoning and adoption of objective design standards. Again, for the benefit of everyone here, this item has been removed from this consent calendar, but we are simply taking public comment on it tonight. Is there any public comment on item F3? Okay, hearing none and having no speaker cards, I will close public comment on item F3, and that takes us to item F6. Item F6 is the agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. for professional planning and environmental review services for the proposed Southwood Valley subdivision. I know, I see there are some members of the public who would like to speak on this. So how we do this is we'll first hear a staff report. Council members will ask, have an opportunity to ask questions. We will then move into public comment and hear that before it comes back to the council for discussion. Okay? Okay? So with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Malkani and council members. I didn't prepare a slideshow for this actual item. But to give you some background on this, and I'm not sure the applicant is present tonight, but I'm not sure if he has chosen to speak. But the background on this is an application has come in, officially been submitted on July 8th of 2025. And with that application, going through the history as well of our files, the complexity of this type of application stems for more than just internal staff. So the contract that you have before you, it's not a $550,000 contract just on the environmental impact report. There's three components to this, and it's the environmental impact report for compliance with CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. The other part of this is compliance with our general plan that requires the planning department, not the applicant, to do a environmental constraint study. And so that has to come from us, and that part of that breakdown includes that work. And then the third part or component of this contract has to do with additional planning services. And when I say that, assistance in terms of processing the entitlements for this application because there is a need for a bit more capacity and expertise and knowledge in terms of some of the complexities that I see without, you know, hearing some of the public talk about their characteristics of this site. So, so that you know, the general plan, EIR portion is about 363,000, some change. The environmental constraints analysis is coming up at about 69,000 and some change. And the labor materials for planning assistance is coming about 116,900. So that's bringing you really about 549. I upped it to 550, rounded it off for that, for that matter. So again, I have had the opportunity to meet with a couple of the members, especially Chris, on the project, and he shared some information and background from the community. I think a lot of the characteristics that I already saw before speaking to Chris are still present, but currently this application is deemed to be incomplete. We are requesting additional information, but the services that I need is what is bringing about this, this application. But right now, it's not a complete application, and the applicant does need to submit additional information for us to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to add?
I just also want to make sure it's clear that the city is not necessi, the city is contracting for the services, but the services that are being provided will be reimbursed by the applicant. So the city will not incur direct costs that impact the city's general fund.
Any other staff report? I'm sure we all have questions, but, okay. Councilmember questions, who wants to start?
Okay. One from the public correspondence was whether the difference between reimbursement and paying in advance is obviously the collectability. When I had asked you about this before, you said you generally take a deposit and bill against it. If you could please explain that for.
Yeah, I'm going to have LaShun.
Yeah, yeah, and I've seen it done both ways. I've seen it done where, you know, you, you collect the initial deposit for staff's time and material. And then when it comes to the EIR, and you've sort of bid it out for that and receive different proposals, and you select one. I've also seen it where the applicant or developer has paid the full check upfront. But the end result is still similar. You may have the full amount for the EIR, but the time and material for staff to process the application is a deposit. And there are times where the applicant exceeds that deposit and continues to owe, in this case, the city for our staff time in that case. In this case, with Arinda, Arinda looks at reimbursement agreements. And it's part of the adopted master fee schedule. Under special and complex projects, it is shown that the city manager can authorize or may enter into a reimbursement agreement under her, in this case, specified guidelines. She may also delegate to the director of Public Works and the director of Planning this obligation. So in this case, we collected a reimbursement agreement. Given the complexity of this project, of course, as I was going through the project, and I see there's a lot more detail and a lot more things and planning studies environmentally that have to get done, we did collect an initial base deposit. But as part of that reimbursement agreement, there is a section there that allows the base deposit to be readjusted. So Arinda takes on this approach of a reimbursement agreement with a set initial deposit amount. Then what happens is, once you begin to work, time and material, whether it's staff, whether it's the consultant, as that amount is sort of depleted, I'll say 50%, an invoice goes out to the applicant to replenish that amount. And so they are on the hook to, as we put it, reimburse for expenses that are paid. Should you come to a point where we, the bills are not being paid, the invoices are not being paid, then in either scenario, staff discontinues working until that bill is called up.
Okay, I have a follow-up question on that unless someone else does. Okay, can I just ask, okay. So just to be really clear, in this case, with this project, and I'm asking both the city manager and, and our planning director, are we going to proceed in a manner where the work, the work will only continue provided that the deposits have been made? In other words, we are not going to go in the negative, right? We're going to, can you explain, just give us an example so we're really clear on how we're going to do this?
So I can let LaShun start.
Okay.
Yes, so the deposit currently, without knowing how the environmental portion of this was going to go, is $50,000. The applicant has paid that $50,000. So we are drawn upon currently, as we look at the complete letter and complete letter, we're drawn upon that $50,000. So I believe this reimbursement agreement says if it drops below 50%, I'd have to read it again, but if it drops below that amount, so each 30 days, we are to be sending invoices. So if we're below that amount, the applicant is required to bring that amount back up to the level that we agree upon in the reimbursement agreement. So right now, it's at 50,000. But again, there is a provision in there that that base deposit can be adjusted depending on a higher amount.
So, so we can manage this in a manner where we're not going in the negative?
Correct, and that's.
According to the agreement.
Yes, yes, Mayor Malkani, and that's consistent with actually with every reimbursement agreement here in Arinda. And this is not the only one.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to interject because it was related. But Councilmember G, you had some other questions?
I just wanted to follow on. I mean, this is a larger and more substantial agreement. We will monitor this agreement very carefully, and it's really going to be working with Kim Lee Horn to make sure that they provide us timely invoices for their time so that we're not falling several weeks behind. We will be working with them to ensure that we get those at the end of the month, you know, two weeks into the next month that we have those invoices on hand so we know where we're at relative to the cost. Planning services, I think it's pretty easy to kind of follow along. It's when we start getting into the environmental document where we might need a higher level of deposit depending on the scope of whatever interval we're at in the environmental review process.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, Councilmember G.
Yes, thank you very much, planning director Cross. Can you tell us a little bit more? Or is there any information you can share with us about who Southwood Valley Estates LLC is? I mean, I'll be honest, you know, I, I don't know about my colleagues, but I know absolutely nothing about them. And I guess the other question I would have is, could you clarify, I mean, this entity made an application to the city. The city did not initiate this. This has come about because a private developer has initiated an application, which we're obligated to respond to, correct?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us any more about this applicant, given the history of this project?
Yeah, the applicant is here today, and I'm not sure if he wanted, Mr. Michael Louie. And I'm not sure if he wanted to speak on who the LLC encompasses. Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Later, I guess.
Mayor, would you like him to come forward and?
Yeah, I think so. I think we, we would appreciate that.
My name is Michael Lou. I'm a managing member of Southwood Valley Estate LLC. It's been, the LLC is formed since 2001, and its ownership of this 43 acres since 2004. We had a previous general plan amendment back in 2010, and we went through this exercise of the EIR. We pay for a third party upward to, by the time it's done, is we pay 400-plus thousand to get a trap EIR. The project was not what we envisioned, and we didn't feel that it's adequately served our purpose. So we withdraw, we never went forward after the trap EIR. So as of 2025, we utilize the SB 330 state law density bonus. And so we put the application in. We're still in the 90 days. We have up to middle of December to return the missing items. And it's, it's not much. We, we're confident we can get everything back in within a month. Now, with regards to the city's concern, I want to say two things. First of all, we have track records. We pay, if, if, I think one of the staff members, Selena Palmer, went back and looked at previous record, and she sided with me that, you know, we have a really good history of payment. At the last general plan amendment for the EIR, we pay everything on time. And payments made, never late. So when this application came in, we talked it out on what is a reasonable deposit because it's too early. So we wired, we pay, we pay 50,000 as a deposit. I think we still have around 30, 35,000 plus still available, unused. And, and I'm available, I mean, I have no problem working with the planning director and Linda Smith on increasing the amount appropriate. I mean, I'm neutral. I would say this, the planning director and I had a very heart-to-heart conversation with Kim, Kim Lee Horn. It's a third party. It's not my choice. It's something that's the planning director think would be good for the city as a third-party environmental consultant that handled environmental constraint, EIR, and helping with maturity of the staff on the technical aspect. And just want to make clear to all of you, all the money's come out of our pocket. So we're going to put this 500,000, maybe a mil up there to demonstrate the feasibility of the project. At the end, a year, year and a half from now, Kim Lee, Kim Lee Horn may come back and say the project's not viable. And we might have to just pack our bag and go away. But the whole exercise is we are funding this environmental, you know, a study and reports and everything else on our own. We're not taxing any part of that on the city of Arinda.
Thank you for that clarification. Hold on, just hold on, I'm just going to see if any other council members have other questions. At this time, okay. Thank you for addressing us. Okay. Did you want to add anything to that?
Nothing more from me.
Any other?
A few questions.
Yes, please, Councilmember Hoxey.
For those of us who are newer to the council, can you help explain to me and the public sort of the whole process? So we got an application at the city in July for this development. You've determined that the planning department needs extra assistance to process this and is suggesting that we enter into this contract. But what, what's the process of development? This seems like the starting point. How does it explain the steps that have to happen before an actual house is built?
Yes, Councilmember Hoxey, this is the very, very beginning. And as you just mentioned, the planning department trying to obtain the staff that they need to review a project of this nature. So you first start off with what we call the Permit Streamlining Act. That's where an application has come into the door. I'm obligated to review that application. And so that's why I said it's incomplete at this point, and I'm waiting for them to submit information. And then, of course, there was a, it, it, the clock starts rewinding again with another 30-day review of the information that comes in. Once I get to a point of where I feel that the information that has come in, I tend to do things a little concurrently, but, and when I say concurrently, I look at an incomplete completeness review plus CEQA. So I start asking for the documents that I already can see I need. A wetlands delineation study, a geotechnical study. I know I already need these things. A soils and drainage study, a traffic study. So Mr. Louie is already aware of these planning studies that I'll need for CEQA. But once I get past the Permit Streamlining Act and it can deem this application complete, I'm into CEQA. And that's where, I'm saying aye, but I'm, this, part of this contract is that Kim Lee Horn is organizing this and leading this for me and working with me and internal staff to get through these, these stages. So once I get to the environmental impact stage, which this has already been determined, this has been determined by the general plan. And even if it wasn't determined by the general plan, with the level of complexity, I still would recommend an environmental impact report. But we have something special here for the economic constraint study. So that's why I still need the consultant to come aboard for the environmental impact report. Once we get through that, that's a big process where we have to do our, we have to go through similar to what we did with Plant Arinda EIR. And what I did ask for that I want to check with Kim Lee Horn is I did specify wanted community engagement. So I do need to check to make sure that that is part of this one. As I can see from the history, this community is very involved and very concerned about this site. So your next phase is the environmental impact report. After you've gone through the environmental impact report, you've got your responses to comments because you've, you've released this document to the public for comments. You then move into the next phase, which is your public hearings. So in a nutshell, those are my three phases. And that's where, I say nutshell, but it's more intricate than that. And as you can see from the studies, I've already previously mentioned there's a lot of technical detail that has to go into this before I can even make a recommendation to the planning commissioner, to you, thank you, in regards to this project.
Okay, and you, can you explain to all of us why Southwood Valley Estates is not contracting with Kim Lee Horn and why the city would do that?
Transparency and independence. I, it's, that's why you heard Michael Louie say he didn't want Kim Lee harm. But it's my choice, and it's my choice because it's an independent review. It's not the neighborhood's consultants, and it's not his consultant. It's mine. And so that gives me that independent and transparency review.
And then Mr. Lou mentioned something about the density bonus. Can you explain what he's referring to?
He's talking.
Sorry, take a moment, planning director.
He's, he's referring to the state density bonus. So the general plan allows for a certain number of density, and he's using that law to increase the number of density for units. So if you're familiar with the general plan, it does say, I think it's realistic capacity is 18 units. But if you see the application that he's submitted, it's 30 units. So he's upped the number of units by use of this state density bonus law.
And we know that in the past, there were issues with the geotechnical review of the land and slides and all that sort of thing. I assume as part of this process, he'll have to show the city why properties he's intending to build won't slide down the hill or?
Yes, there's an environmental constraints study, and that's one of the main topics is the geotechnical report, the soils and drainage, the wetlands delineation. That's all part of that, which will be packaged into the EIR.
Okay, and what, what happens if we don't approve this contract tonight? Then what would happen?
I don't have the support staff that I need to assist in reviewing the studies. I also don't have the contract that I need to comply with the general plan that says the city must do the studies, not the applicant. So I don't have the, I don't have the consultant.
And by approving the contract tonight, we are not agreeing to the project. We are just allowing the city to meet its obligation to respond to the application that's been submitted to the city?
Perfectly said.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for those questions and for the responses. It was helpful, I think, at least to me. Any other questions? Okay. If there's no more council member questions, I'm gonna open public comment on item F6, and I'm going to call speakers in the order I received the cards. And then we will open up, after we go through the cards, we will open up to anybody else who wants to make public comment, okay? So the first speaker card I have is from Mr. Warrenoff, Nick Warrenoff.
Good evening. I can tell from the council members' comments that my written submissions were read and thought about, so I'm going to focus on the discussion at this meeting. With all due respect, it is absolutely false to believe that the city is not at risk of going into a negative position. The environmental consultant will work for 30 days. At the end of the month, it'll send a bill to the city. So you're already on the hook for that month. And if the developer doesn't pay, you're on the hook. So you're, every month, you're at risk of being in a negative position. And by the time the city gets around to sending the bill to the developer, the developer has 30 days to pay. So you're basically at risk for, at a minimum, two to three months of the environmental consultant's services. I have no issue with the reimbursement agreement for staff time. With the deposit, there's no other feasible or practical way. But the subject property, you don't have a financial statement from the developer. You don't know how much money they have on hand. I submitted you evidence that there's over $8 million of liens on the property. I submitted you the recorded deeds of trust. So you can't assume that if everything falls apart, that you'll be able to enforce a reimbursement against the property. There is no good reason whatsoever not to use a three-party agreement. The planning director will confirm that they are commonly used. They're not required, but the practicality is that the city, the planning director, the city manager can retain all the control that they have under the agreement before you. And a three-party agreement can go on to provide that the consultant will only look to the developer and not to the city for payment. It's not even that complicated. It's not complicated at all. It's the only approach that's fiscally prudent. And someone asked about the density bonus. The point of the density bonus isn't to increase the number of units. The density bonus creates a right on the part of the developer to obtain a waiver of any design standard that stands in the way of its plan. And we see this next door in Lafayette on every application. We see it all over the state. I track this stuff like I track my calories, which is imperfect, but I do look at it every day. And so I urge you, in conclusion, I urge you, I urge you to just require that this be recast as a three-party agreement so that the city is fully protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warrenoff. Next, we have Carl Eben.
Hi, I'm here with Judy. We've been here 51 years, which is more than many of you have been around. But in any case, in the 51 years, a number of times, the Southwood Development has come up. So this is not the first time by any means. And eventually, people realize that it's potentially destructive and dangerous, and therefore it gets voted down. So that's happened about every 10 years. Recently, I had an occasion when the city put something in my mailbox saying that we had to take out some of our shrubbery. Why is that? So I talked to the city about that. Oh, there's high fire danger along our street, which can prevent people from safely exiting when we have a terrible situation. And therefore, we want to get all the shrubs away from the street so there won't be any fire. Wow. So I figured, oh gee, our landscaping is endangering our lives, potentially the lives of our neighbors. Well, I guess we better rip everything out. Then I get a notice that gee, the city wants to move, build 30 houses and move in over 100 people on our overcrowded, dangerous street. So what's the problem? Is there a problem? Is our problem the shrubs? Or is the problem the potential dangers of what we're talking about building? It's pretty clear to me what the dangers are. And if they, really, the left hand is not talking to the right hand in the city. One says it's really dangerous. He says, oh, the heck with it. Let's bring in 100 more people. So that's my comment.
Thank you. I do have a speaker card from Michael Lou. Would you like to make any additional comments? Okay. Then we have Chris Neal.
Thank you again. My time's three minutes. I've been overrun. First of all, the plan director and I are in agreement as to the interpretation of Southwood Valley and the general plan. I'm gonna stand out right here, which, beginning of my company. Where the general plan specifically says, this is a riparian habitat, et cetera, et cetera. I'll go through that in a minute. But the outline in the general plan is 43 acres, and that's the whole area in green. The area in the middle is representative of 10 acres, okay? It doesn't mean the shape of the amebyus gotta be that way. It just says it's gotta be 10 acres. And that's what the general plan says. The general plan says you can develop up to 10 acres, all right? And everything else must be left as open space. That's what the general plan says. You can look it up. Specifically says that. If you can find a general plan anywhere, by the way, which is another issue. But anyway, so if you look at this, I don't know how many of you are familiar. I think Councilmember G is, but this is a bowl-shaped type thing. And in the previous development, they had 15-foot retaining walls around the side so they could fit in their proposal number of, I think it was 16 or 17 units, not 30 units as this, whatever it was that they've submitted, which is another major confusing thing, and I'll get to that other thing, too. But anyway, this is the general plan, okay? So you're allowed to develop the green area per the general plan, and all others gotta be in green, gotta be open space. So the green area includes roads and all that kind of stuff. Now, I'm an engineer. I've studied this area a long time. I've lived next to it. From a practical standpoint, if you follow the general plan, honestly, honestly, you can build maybe three or four, maybe five units down there, maybe, okay? Because it's so steep, and it's so hilly, and you'd still destroy the riparian habitat. And so a few comments about the riparian habitat and whatever. And what are some of the constraints to this building? Okay, first of all, you have destruction of riparian habitat. You have flooding, faults, slides, excessive erosion. You have fire truck access issues, big, big problem. And this has all been reviewed before, six or seven years ago. This is nothing new to a lot of the people here. I know it's new to all of you, all right? And that's why I, please give me a little more time. That's why I sent out all the stuff I had.
What we can't, we can't extend, what we can do, give me one second. What we can do is we can ask questions. The council members can't ask questions if we would like to, correct? Okay. I would like to ask you, sir, if you do have additional concerns about the riparian habitat, to please explain those.
I have additional concerns about the riparian habitat. I have additional concerns about fire truck access. I have different concerns about the 15-foot concrete wall that will be developed, that has to be developed. I have concerns about the steep terrain. I have concerns about the history of this value, which none of you have taken the time, probably, I'm not sure. But I sent you something. If you read everything I said, you will come to the same conclusion that I did. And I sent you everything on a PDF format, and there's a whole bunch of issues.
We have, we have received your written comments and trust that we've all, we all did receive your written comments. And we have had an opportunity to review those.
Well, I know, okay.
You know, I haven't, we generally review all the comments.
I think before you make a decision tonight on approving this, you need to read those comments. Because I almost guarantee you will, you will require the bidder to revise his bid.
I need to ask you to, I need to, unless there's any more questions, we can't give you any more time on this, but.
Okay, one, can I say one last thing, please?
Only if there's a question. Okay, what, hold on. If anybody else wants to make public comment, we will announce that later. Can, what is the one last thing you want to say, sir? I'll ask that question.
The, if you read my comments and you don't bid, there's so many issues, it's hard to start. But basically, Arinda has not included all the information to the bidder. He's not included any of the information of significance to the bidder. Now, by that, I mean the comments that the planning department of Arinda made regarding the former proposal. There's extremely important comments in there that apply to any proposal. There is also extremely important documents in the package I sent you regarding the neighborhood input.
Okay, thank you.
Those comments need to be incorporated and informed to the bidder so he is aware of those contents. Because other, you haven't done that, and you are up to, you know, because you haven't done that. And that, you can't bid honestly without making sure the bidder understands those issues. And so your only choice is you have to withdraw the bid at this time.
Appreciate your comment. I don't have any more speaker cards on this subject. Is there anyone else here who would like to make public comment on this item? Okay, seeing, yes, Mr. Lou? Yes, please, if you are not making public comment, do not speak, unless you're at the microphone. If you want to make public comment, you can stand up by the microphone, okay? We have another speaker for public comment.
Just want to make one comment, very simple. The reimbursement agreement has a threshold that I have to have certain deposits. Once it dip below the 50%, I have to replenish. So the city is never in a situation where it got caught with their pants down and got stuck with a bill. So as the project move along, right now it's an early stage, and I, you know, there's 50,000 involved. That's already a deposit. Only 11,000 or 12,000 spent, and it's sitting right there. But should it increased more, and the city or wind, I say, Southwood, you need to increase your deposit, I'm willing, able, and capable of doing that, and that's part of the agreement.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item, on this item? Okay, could you please come up to the microphone?
Hello, my name is Minda, and this is my second time coming to this.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you repeat your name, Mina?
Minda. It's my second time. I've been here for almost 30 years. And this year, my house is sliding. We had to hire people to do the foundation job. So how can you put 30 houses there? That's cramped. And I was laughing about the 16-feet wall. And I had this concern. I talked to Ms. G, and she encouraged me to talk to all of you. So I think we should consider people on the top house. We have an issue. You cannot just bluntly say, yes, the developer have money to pay you guys, but how about the people who already live here? We have a problem. Please consider that. And also, I have a time on the Yoto Neil to take my time, come to speak. He can speak better than me. Can you pick my time?
If someone else wants to make public comment, they can, ma'am?
You use my time.
No, we don't, we don't do that.
Why not? Because I yelled to him.
We don't do that. We don't do that. You are welcome to make additional public comment if you'd like.
Now, I just tell you, my house is in danger, in trouble.
Okay.
So please, not, I'm not the only one there. As the people have a house left already gone. And my house, this year, I had a foundation job to patch up. So please make that consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We very much consider that. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this item who hasn't already spoken on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. I do want to thank everybody who came here today to speak, as well as those of you who submitted written information to us, which we did receive. So that brings this item back to the council for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask the planning director one more question before we start our discussion? I was hoping you could explain the process of choosing Kim Lee Horn and Associates for this contract.
The level of expertise and skills that they have shown for the team. I did reach out to another consultant, didn't receive a response there for that consultant, so. But in reviewing Kim Lee Horn, very strong background expertise in the areas that I needed, I need in terms of this type of application.
And what's the process for supplying information to whoever you contract with to do the work as far as past history and other?
Thanks for asking me that question, Councilmember Hoxsey. Actually, Kim Lee Horn already has the information from our files. That was provided to them early on in the process before I selected them. They wanted to know, in their words, what they were getting into. And so I actually have provided them the files. I also mentioned to Chris that as some of the information he provided to me, I would definitely as well pass along. Some of that information that I've read through still holds true today, and some of it doesn't because the plans have changed. Some of the comments that were made in the 2008 incomplete letter, it just, it doesn't correlate to the set of blueprints that I, old way of saying, drawings that I have today. But I have indicated I will pass along that information. That's part of our late correspondence. In fact, let me correct myself. I already have. It was done earlier tonight.
And is there like an open bidding process that the city goes through? Or we select providers who we know are capable of the work that we need done?
We reach out. You reach out to the providers that you've either worked with or you know is capable, that has the expertise and the level of skill that you need.
And any other questions? I had one more, actually, which is, there was... I had one more, actually, which is, there was some public comment to the effect of, you know, don't allow these 30 units to be built, right? What? The city's not allowing that now, right? What, are, are we, by doing this, are we committed to, to the building of this? By, by getting this additional information? What is the city committing itself to?
I don't have a recommendation for you right now. That's why I need my consultant. I need to really review the information that's coming in. I need to review the technical studies that I need to make a strong recommendation to you of what I, what I think, whether it's approval, denial, approval with conditions. I'm just not there yet to do that. So right now, as I mentioned earlier, it's incomplete application. And there are questions still about how I see open space. I'm seeing development on the open space. And so how are, are you, you know, rectifying that? So these are still questions that I have put to Michael Liu that they must respond to.
And if we, there were, I think, some really valid concerns raised about issues like evacuation, about instability and geologically instability, houses sliding. If the city has concerns about those items and development, how do we flesh that out? Is this the process? Is there a different process? Can you just clarify that?
Yeah, there will be a point in the process, I'll say. I, I, right now, from my, sort of my review of the history, my review of this application, review of the general plan, zoning, some of the studies I've already mentioned to you are things that still hold true today. The wetlands delineation study, the geotechnical study, because there are landslides, the biological study for the riparian habitat. So you, you, all of that still applies, and those are still studies that I'm requesting today. I haven't received all of that yet. But it's also in part where Kim Lee Horn is helping me to, with, with their level of expertise and their consult, subconsultants, is helping me to produce. So as I appreciate Chris and seeing some of the comments that he shared from 2008, I have gone through those comments and making sure that I'm sort of check marking. Yeah, I, this has been covered, or this question has already been asked. So that's where I'm at at this point.
Thank you. Any-
I have one more question. Did you look at doing this contract as a three-party contract? And why did you select the reimbursement method of going forward?
Customarily and protocol for City of Arinda. The example I gave you earlier, that's actually how Contra Costa County did it. We, at that time, we did take in the full amount of the contract. But it, again, it didn't alleviate the fact that I still had to send an invoice. I still had to collect money for staff's portion. So either way, I'm still sending out an invoice and trying to stay on top of collecting, updating the accounts. But this is the protocol that Arinda, the city, is, is taking. And I looked at a few older reimbursement agreements. And I didn't go as far back, but we go as far back as 2007.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And so in terms of discussion, I have some thoughts. Does anyone want to start? Not I, oh. I close public comment, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to start if you'd like. Um, just because I've been an applicant in some of these before. I hope the concerned citizens in the audience tonight understand that it would be wrong and unfair for us tonight to deny an application that has not been evaluated on its merits. We have to let the application be filed. We have to process it fairly and either approve or deny it on its merits. So even though there's quite a lot of history and the people who live nearby have a lot of valid concerns and a lot of knowledge, it is too early in the process for us to deny it on the chance to submit an EIR. And that's all tonight is. It's the very beginning of the process. What I really heard you saying, a lot of the comments in writing in tonight, is, is a very valid fear that the momentum of spending 500,000 can become kind of a self-fulfilling thing, that these projects, you know, once that money is spent and then the EIR is out there, and then it's just a matter of how you're going to address all these questions versus should we be doing this at all? And I know that the reason so many people came out tonight is that you'd like to head this off at the pass before millions of dollars are spent, before a whole EIR gets written. But that's not a decision we have to make tonight. So I, I hope you understand that the applicant hears you, the planning staff hears you. And I think the applicant is going to be wise to go through the process very collaboratively with the consultants and with the planning staff to make sure that money that applicant is spending is well-spent. But at this process, I think the correct thing to do is for us to approve the process to go forward as recommended. And I've got a lot of confidence in our planning director and our city manager to manage the financial risk of that. I think they've got a ton of experience, and I'm personally not concerned.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think that our vice mayor summed up beautifully my comments as well. Please understand, and I, and I, and I've been on the council long enough, and I do understand, you know, that when things like this get revisited, that there can be a lot of strong feelings about it. But again, we're not tonight approving anything except for the opportunity to respond to an application that we have to respond to. The process will be lengthy. It will be detailed. It will have enormous opportunity for continued comment. And I know that that can be frustrating. But we have no ability to say no at this point. But we're not saying yes to anything either, except that, that the applicant has a right to pursue this and that the city needs the resources to comply with what we have to do, you know, for the process. So I'm, I don't think, as the council, we're attempting to comment in any way, shape, or form on the merits of the project at this point, because we can't. But we're obligated to follow the process. And so I think that's, you know, I'm in favor of giving our staff the support they require to, you know, to follow the process. And I, again, in the 10-plus years I've been on the city council, we have never had an issue with our staff not being able to financially control anything from any of the development world in terms of the reimbursement to the city. So I'm not, I'm not concerned. I am quite confident that the staff has the ability to ensure that the city gets reimbursed and that if we're not getting reimbursed, we won't be prosecuting any work, so.
Thank you. And council- We, public comment is closed. Please do not speak out of turn from the audience, okay? Any, Councilmember Hoxey, did you want to chime in? Otherwise, I could, either way, whatever you prefer.
I, I, I think we've all sort of are coming to the same conclusion, which is that we're not saying anything about the proposed land use, but rather trying to provide our planning department with the resources they need to respond to an application that they've received. The only question I have is whether this should be a third-party, three-party agreement or a reimbursement agreement. But our planning director, who is very knowledgeable, says this is our protocol and says that this is the way it's usually done and that she's comfortable that if we had to stop work because we weren't paid, she would be able to do that in a timely fashion. So I feel like I have to rely on her judgment in that regard.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I want to also thank all of you and the vice mayor for starting this off and really summing up what's before us, I think, very appropriately. And, you know, this, to the extent, I mean, I do want to thank the members of the public who came here to make public comment and took the time out of your evenings to be here. Because, and I think we all do, because you have raised some really valid concerns. I also want to thank the applicant for taking the time to be here. You've raised some really valid concerns, and though, we are, we are fully aware of those. And this, as I understand it, is the process by which we get this information and we can look into issues like evacuation and stability of the land and feasibility of the project and impact. I mean, that is, that is what this process is. So it needs to be a fair process, and we need to get that information. And so I concur with, with my colleagues that we need to get this information. I also concur that I have full faith in, in staff and in our planning director and city manager and our staff that they're going to be able to proceed with this and appreciate that it is a independent, transparent, you know, contractor that we've selected to do this. So I would agree to move to, I, I would like to make a motion.
Can I make one?
Yes, unless there's any more.
I, I understand that there are members of the public who still feel like they have things they'd like to add to the conversation. And I understand that it's frustrating that public comment has been closed. You can be assured that we, as council people, read everything that you submit to us. We spend a lot of hours-
Sir, please sit down. You are out of turn right now. Please sit down, okay? Or you cannot speak right now, okay? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Councilmember Hoxey?
I, I actually disagree. We absolutely care with what the public wants. We also want to make sure that we have a fair process in the City of Arinda to address applications that the city receives.
Sir, please be quiet. You are not allowed to make comment out of public comment. We gave you extensive time to make public comment above and beyond. And if anything, we went above and beyond in terms of allowing you some more time. So please, I don't, what is the process when we have someone that's being disruptive? Can we please proceed? Okay. Councilmember Hoxey, I wanted to give you an opportunity to sum up if you wanted to do so.
No, I just wanted our public to be assured that we are only discussing a contract that will help our planning department obtain information. That's what we're discussing at this time, not the project itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. The recommendation before us is to approve the agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for an amount not to exceed 550,000 and authorize the city manager to approve up to an additional 10% contingency based on evaluation of additional services. If there is no further discussion, I would like to move to do that. Is that the appropriate action? Okay.
Yeah, it's time for a motion to approve F6.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to approve F6. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that passes unanimously. That takes us to item G, which is public hearing. We do not have a public hearing tonight. Item H on our agenda, our policy matters. Tonight, our policy matter, item H1, is the citywide objective design standards study session and implementing action of the housing element.
Welcome to the study session on the objective design standards. Thank you, Mayor McConney.
You, you want to just, this is important, too. So I just want to give folks a minute to-
Sure, sure, sure.
So that we-
I was just doing introductions. Thank you for being-
Okay. Right. I am, I think-
Mayor, would you be interested in just a few-minute recess so that we can make sure that before we start this item?
Why don't we just take a two-minute recess?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Sticking around, please take your seats. All right. Okay, and I think, let's just wait for the PowerPoint and we're going to resume meeting. And we are-
All good?
On item H1. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor McConney. Thank you, council members, for being here. This is a study session. We'll be talking about the objective design standards, in particular, the citywide objective design standards.
Hold on one second. Those in the back of the room, you're welcome to go talk in the hallway. But otherwise, if you're in the room, we need to be quiet. Thank you.
So, yeah, so I also want to thank the staff and the public who are listening in. And let me make sure I'm using this correctly. So as I mentioned, we are at a city council study session. And tonight, we'll, our agenda is a welcome, a background on what the citywide objective design standards are and, and what objective design standards are in general, to talk a little bit about the citywide ODS project, which was started this year, talk about the consultant process, have a discussion on the topic, get direction from council members, and then talk a little bit briefly about next steps. I did want to note some, I am Christine Thompson. I'm a principal planner with the City of Arinda. Selena is sitting in the audience. She is one of the key staff members. And our consultant, Tony Perez with Opticos, is here, and he will do a portion of the presentation as well. So just a little background on the objective design standards. So really, we start with the 2017 SB9 state legislation around housing, which started a streamlining process, which introduced the idea of objective design standards as a way to facilitate housing creation. And then also SB 330 acknowledging that we do have a housing crisis in the state of California and that objective design standards can be a tool to facilitate housing creation. Oops, I need to go back. The, the objective design standards are intended to make requirements clearer and more predictable, easier to interpret. And they do apply to multifamily, they apply to qualifying projects. But what that means is multifamily projects and multi-unit projects that meet certain criteria set forth by certain laws. And there are multiple laws, so there's multiple criteria. So it depends on which track you're going. So, but the big theme is multifamily housing, multi-unit projects. So in terms of really objective design standards, they're really trying to balance the flexibility and predictability, the applicant knowing, the staff knowing what is required, but also at the same time minimizing constraints- at the same time minimizing constraints so that housing can be created. So it's a, it's a tricky balance. So, and so to follow up on that question about the qualifying project, eligible developments, these are these qualifying projects. Sometimes they're, if they come under a certain law, they have a specified level of affordability. SB thirty five has a requirement on that. The majority of them are infill sites. They do have to comply with the existing residential and mixed use, the general plan and the zoning provisions, so those are still active. And then there are other requirements in terms of the location or the demolition restrictions. So it's a variety of things that can apply in addition to the objective design standards themselves. So the important thing is that the SB thirty five really introduced this streamlined ministerial entitlement process and it relies on having objective design standards. Objective design standards are the tool that allows the local community to specify what makes design quality that's relevant to their local, their local look and feel that they want. So this is a huge opportunity to have a bit of local control in a time when we're trying to facilitate housing and to, and to really sort of have a very particular look and feel and to communicate that look and feel to applicants. Another component part of the context of this is that there was the six cycle housing element that was approved into 2023. I know everyone's very familiar with that, but in that there is an action three point E, objective design standards. And so that in terms of implementing the housing element, it is a requirement as part of implementing the housing element. And objective design standards were developed for the downtown sites, but they were not developed for citywide, and that's why this project is now following that, starting in the spring and, you know, where we are now. We have a draft document looking at a citywide view. So again, mentioned it started in April. We did research with our consultant team, with our project team, staff team in May, June, July, and August, so working through the summer to really create the draft that was included in today's packet. September, we had a, a study session with the planning commission, and here we are in October. And we're looking towards spring 2026 to adopt the objective design standards citywide. One of the key things that we did when we started the research was to say, where does this apply? And so really looking at the residential areas, the areas that are whited out are areas that are either do not allow housing or they are under the planned development process and so would not be subject to objective design standards. But the yellow is the area that we're talking about and it does, it does cover quite a bit of Arinda. And I just wanted to be clear about this, the state law, laws around housing are a moving target. And so I mentioned, you know, I started this conversation talking about SB thirty five and three thirty, but since then, there's been SB nine four fifty, SB six eighty four, and SB eleven twenty three. So SB nine is a lot split, is multiple units on single lot. The SB eleven twenty three introduced small subdivisions on vacant lots. And then SB four is on religious sites. SB seventy nine, we were watching it. We are not in an urban county, so it does not apply to Arinda. But these are the kinds of things that we have to keep an eye on in terms of that being a changing landscape from Sacramento. And so we did, we had, we do have a full draft. We did set an, a set of articles that have standards around site design, standards around building design and around subdivision standards, as well as an administration chapter. And we do, we do not have architectural style standards. That was a topic of conversation early in the process when we were ironing out a table of contents. And we acknowledged that the majority of the objective design standards do not include architectural style standards, however, some do. And so it's an important choice. At this point, we don't have them there, but we'll talk more about the potential of that as a tool that could be added. So at this point, that's the background and introduction, and I want to turn over the, the presentation to Tony from Opticos.
Thank you.
That advances. Okay, thank you. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me. I'm Tony Perez with Opticos Design here in Berkeley. I've been working for the office for thirteen years now, a long time coming up to the Bay Area. I live in Southern California and come up to Berkeley often. And it's been interesting and great to work on this. It's a very, we work in a lot of communities across California, across the country, and you, it's, it's rare that you run into communities that really have a high respect for what they build. That, that sounds maybe a little harsh for the other communities, but a lot of other communities are just in a mode of getting things done, getting things built, and then there are communities that are looking at everything they built. So I've been asked to talk to you about form-based codes, objective standards, and architectural style standards. So the three things I'm going to talk about. The first thing is to talk about form-based codes, and to do that, I want to compare zoning approaches. And in doing that, there are three topics that I'm going to use: form, use and intensity, and management. And when you look at what zoning regulates, regardless of, of the type of tool, whether it's form-based code or conventional slash Euclidean, you've heard the term Euclidean, it's the same as conventional when I say it. They're regulating three big topics: form, how buildings look and shape, are shaped. The uses in those buildings are on the sites. And then the operations, you know, the hours of operation, how something can, how long something can open, how it functions, all those kinds of things. And when you compare those things, those three factors, this is how these two approaches tend to look at those three topics. Conventional or Euclidean codes tend to look at use and intensity primarily, and then management secondarily, almost equally, but usually less. And then form, it's there, but it's something you work out through discretionary review process, which is why cities are now having to adopt objective standards because they are relying so heavily on the discretionary review process, which has become now not possible under recent state laws. And you compare that to form-based codes, which have been in existence now for over thirty-five years. And form is the primary topic. And then much to, you know, let's say it's a myth or misunderstanding that form-based codes don't regulate use. They do, but most of the time, they're deferring to the existing use standards, so that's maybe why you haven't seen a use table in them. But I've worked on a lot of codes, a lot of form-based codes that regulate use. And then obviously, they, they regulate management. But you can see the, the shift here, right? Form versus use. So use is still important, but form is most important because form changes the least, use changes more often. Then a quick comparison between the two systems. At the very, I would say, top middle in this slide, under the terms conventional and form-based, you see that spectrum. And on the left-hand side, you see certainty and predictability. Under the conventional Euclidean approach, which relies on designer view and discretionary review, certainty and predictability are less. They're there, but they're less, to a lesser degree. Under a form-based code, which has more prescriptive standards, they're more explicit about what is expected, the, the predictability and certainty are higher. And just to be clear, there are form-based codes that, that rely on a discretionary process, and that's why objective standards are a form of form-based codes. But objective standards can also be written in a non-form-based code way. So I hope that is not confusing, but they can be done either way. So let me say it another way. Not all objective standards are form-based codes. Not all form-based codes have, are objective standards. The, again, you can see the, the comparisons here. I won't go through all the items in the interest of time, but they're summarized by the things that I was just showing previously in the comparisons. And then the other, the, one of the big departures from conventional codes, that form-based codes makes, is that form-based codes intentionally shape the public realm, whether it's rural, whether it's very urban, like your downtown, small, small downtown, small rural downtown, whatever it is, the buildings and the street are working together. So there's the street and there are the buildings. And all the things in between, the landscaping, the trees, the curb, the width of the street, the, the setback of the buildings, all those things work together intentionally to create, to create an intended physical form. You'll hear that a lot when you hear about form-based codes. Whatever that intended physical form is, it's not a mystery. It's something that the standards are engineered or drafted to generate on a building by building basis. And you can get into as many topics as you'd like. Here's just one example of one building and several topics identified, and I could identify five or six more. So it's the, you know, I used to use this, the, this, this recording studio metaphor where if you look at a recording studio in an engineer, how they use it, you can turn all the dials to, you know, to your liking. And a form-based code the same way. More topics, we want to regulate higher or lower, you can do that. Typically, these are the topics that a form-based code regulates: building setbacks, building height, number of stories, or height to a certain element, say height to eve, is it very important in, in lower intensity contexts? The size of the building footprint itself, not even what's in it, but how wide and how long is it? Building entry elements, such as porches, et cetera. Where the parking is located? That's a big determinant on what the physical character is ultimately going to be, and then allowed uses. So just walking through a comparison of conventional codes and form-based codes here in these slides, this is the conventional way how most zoning codes regulate building form. They've used lot coverage and maximum building height, and then they depend on discretionary review process to basically sculpt that building and that project. And everybody knows that process very well. In a form-based code, it's, it's more intentional. Like I was saying with those two, two street pictures, you're saying, well, here's an area where we want bigger buildings and these are the exact footprints. We, we can have smaller ones, but this is as big as they're going to get, and we know the form. Or on the right-hand side, the buildings might be a little closer to the road and the buildings narrower, but we know the ultimate size. Can somebody design them differently? Yes, but they're going to fit in these boxes and no bigger. And, and that has less to do with lot coverage and more about what kind of buildings do you want. The form-based codes then go further, and some of them use building, building types like this. You can see on the left, that's where we left off with the basic form-based code. And in the middle are what we call building types. Sometimes form-based codes call them building forms. And there are three of many variations here: multiplex, a multiplex with a rear wing in a courtyard. And the idea here is that the maximum zoning envelope, that the conventional code needs a discretionary review process to sculpt, the building type forms already sculpted for you. They're agreed upon through a process, you identify them, you, you identify the maximum footprints, the heights, all that, and you put those standards into a code. So taking that form-based code approach into objective standards, then you can take those building types and now go further and say, since we are in an objective standards environment, situation, and we can't have a meeting to negotiate with the architect and developer, what are we going to do in lieu of that? Well, we need to put down all the things that we would talk about into diagrams and dimensions and writing. And so one of those things is massing types, we found very helpful. So on the left-hand side is a building type, it's a multiplex with a rear wing. And on the right-hand side are just four of usually six or eight different massing type options that the applicant can choose to apply to that form. So you can see that there are little variations and articulation in, in the forms on the right that are not in the form on the left. So if you stop the, the form on the left, they would design that and apply architecture to it, and it could be fine. But again, when you don't have discretionary review to work with, you have to go to the extra step, we think, we advise our clients, to go to that extra step and apply massing types, to do something that is not punitive to the design, is, does not reduce housing yield, number of units, or square footage, but has simple, effective, clear massing that then the architecture can be applied to that. Then architectural style standards, that's another option. And we typically advise cities not to regulate architectural style unless they're prepared to really spend the time and do the research to, to have the standards the way they need to be. And that, let me be more clear. That's a long way of saying that you could put down really detailed standards, but they wouldn't be very helpful to the architects that use them. So you want to make sure and regulate the things that do two things. One, the elements that do two things. One is only the essential items that communicate that style. For example, if you're doing a craftsman building, what is it about the craftsman's style that you need? And what is it that could be secondary that you don't need to communicate that style and have somebody say, that's a craftsman building? There's no doubt about it. What are those essential elements? And then the other thing is to then look at those elements and say, what are the dimensions that the industry uses as opposed to that they might have used 150 years ago? And there's, there's a balance there. Sometimes they, people are doing things that they used to do years ago, and many times they're not because of construction techniques or available materials. And so you want to make sure that when you put something in that is a compliance-only review, there's no negotiation. It has to be something that is reasonable and available in marketplace and in, in the industry. So for example, window trim comes up a lot. If we said, you know what, the buildings in Arinda have historic three and a half inch window surrounds, but nobody can get three and a half inch window surrounds unless they hire a custom mill worker. That's a choice you need to make. And if it's an important policy objective to have three and a half inch window surrounds, then it is, and you're, and you're communicating that. But it might be more realistic, say, the industry is producing three inch and it looks just as good and it would be, be just as fine. So let's, let's make sure of that. So those are the kind of little nuances that you have to be careful about in architectural style standards. So a few more things about that. I want to take you through five approaches that are used by different clients of ours in regulating building design and, and style. And they, they go in ascending order. So here, you see the five, five choices on the left and examples of communities going across the screen. And for example, Corder Madera has two of those checked. That means they have massing articulation and building types. Davis has three, they have the two that Corder Madera has and so forth. So every, every one going to the right has what the one on the left is doing. So let's go through the first one here. First one is massing and articulation. Everybody, every client, every city does this. This is pretty basic and it's style neutral and it's saying, we're not going to regulate how big the buildings are, we're going to regulate that you articulate the mass in a certain way, that you apply massing features, either step backs or plane changes or, or a tower element based on certain increments of building size. And that's all adjustable to the community. So that's the, and then the second part is to compose the facades with bays. So you see how the bottom diagram has the vertical lines that are teal there, that might be green on your screen, and then the word bay above. It's organizing facades in a way that the eye sees them and says, that's an organized facade, it's beautiful. It, it can still have variety, but you read it because it's organized. Your, the building right next door, the, I guess it was the old library, that's a beautiful example of bays, it's just beautiful. And then the project that's been shown to us a lot, Arinda Woods, that it's another example of bays being applied to a building to organize it. Your eye reads it and it feels, feels very comfortable. And again, the underlying, an underlying theme to all of this, in addition to the nuances of architectural style detail that I mentioned, is, is just the flexibility for designers, making sure that you regulate the things that need to be regulated and then leaving enough creativity to still generate the things you are expecting, but to not tie the applicant's hands or the designer's hands so tightly that they have no choice but to produce the same thing over and over. The second one of five I'm going to show you here are building types. So some communities apply these building types, or I use the, the term building form. And again, these are. And again, these are style neutral. And you could see here, this is a courtyard, uh, building form we used in Santa Barbara. And it specifies based on buildings that we find in the area, how big they are, how tall they are, how wide the massing is facing the street, all kinds of things like that. Where the entries are, all those kinds of things. And then the third one is, uh, we worked on this in, uh, a few communities. A couple of years ago, we worked on it in Sebastopol. And they said, you know, we don't want to regulate style, but we want to regulate elements. And this one's a little tricky because you can identify elements like eaves. Eaves are a very important element. They say a lot about a style, windows do too. But if you only regulate elements, if you have great designers in your community and know, and, and that's all that works in your community, you probably could do well. But the problem is that if, if a designer that doesn't, isn't great in your view or in, in your experience, applies elements without a lot of control, you could get all kinds of unintended consequences because you can mix them. It's, it's really hard to, very difficult technically to take elements and say, do these together, but don't do those together. Because very, you very quickly find yourself on the road to architectural style. So elements is an approach, but I would say it's an approach that works if you regulate fewer than more details. The next one is architectural style. So I have two slides on this. First, the first slide is simply to say that if you regulate style, you are, uh, you're going to want to identify the styles that you want to regulate. And that sounds obvious, but it isn't. Because you might have 12 styles that you find in your community. But then you have to ask yourself the question, of these types of projects that use objective standards, what are the applicants most likely to use? So for example, we, um, we work in communities where, let's say there's a fairy tale, fairy tale or storybook type of style. Applicants aren't going to build that on their own. It's just, it's too expensive and it's very, very customized. Unless that was the only style allowed in the whole city, they have no choice. But, uh, that is not a realistic, necessarily a realistic style to apply in these kinds of projects. And so that, that is also a, a key set of decisions to decide which style should you regulate if you're going to regulate style at all. So let me show you what that looks like. Each style has its own standards. Here are two and two rows. The top row is what we call contemporary. In the bottom row, you're familiar with here in your downtown precise plan that we worked on. That is the, um, Spanish revival or Italian Mediterranean, some people call it. But you can see that there are representative elevation drawings for multifamily buildings and mixed-use buildings. And then each of those key elements, say the roof, the eve, the windows, balconies, wall surfaces, those are pulled out and details are drawn. And then again, I want to point your attention to, if, if you look at the, the detailed eve diagrams in the middle of the slide, the right middle, you see that there are lines drawn there with dimensions, but not everything that is drawn is regulated. That's on purpose. Again, back to the point of what do you regulate? What's needed to communicate that style and what is not? Could you regulate more? Sure. But that's, that's just a thing you need to weigh against the kinds of, things that you're asking applicants and designers to do. I just want to call your attention to the very right bottom. You see the one with the curved bracket, shaped bracket? You see that it's there and there's a, there's a height to it, but it doesn't require you to shape it like that. So I think sometimes when architects and applicants see these drawings, initially they see them and say, wow, they're telling us how to, how to draw and design the bracket. No, we could, if that's what the city wanted to do, if they felt that that was important to the style. We're just saying that it needs to be of a certain depth to communicate that style. And then lastly, um, in Santa Barbara, this is the only place that, that has done it to this extent. They said, you know, the two prevalent styles in the core, what everybody knows, all the visitors that come to Santa Barbara go into the yellow areas. And for most people, you know, if you ask them what style is Santa Barbara, they'd say it's one. There's actually three or four in the core. They're just variations of Spanish colonial revival and Italian Mediterranean, the variations of that. But we boiled it down to two and said, okay, in the core, that's where only those two styles are allowed because it's so important to keep that style and that character going there. But in the green, there are four styles, craftsman, Tudor and, and, um, and the other two. And so, uh, you can choose any one of those four. And then in the blue, you can do all of those six. So six total styles, but they're controlled where you can do them. Uh, so that is, that's the first time we've done it to that extent in an objective standard project. I, um, I think that's it. I hope that wasn't too long. I just wanted to give you a, an explanation of the differences, uh, in these, in these tools. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, um, what we're asking you guys for. So, uh, in the, we've really said in the staff report, um, we're interested in the design topics. So that's why I was showing you the table of contents. You know, you've read through the document, but, uh, we really want to get insight on, are these the right design topics? If there are specific design standards, um, you know, are there standards that, uh, you said, yep, that's totally right on the, on the nose, uh, others where you said, I'm not so sure that's right for Arinda? Um, and then the question of, um, architectural style standards, um, is that something we want to introduce? Because at this time, we do not have it in the draft document. And we did, we did run through in the planning commission, we, we ran through sort of a lot of open-ended, um, questions to kind of facilitate conversation around objective design standards in general. We can do that, but if you feel like you've had sufficient explanation, um, and with those questions about, um, you know, design topics, specific design standards and, and architectural style standards, if you could, if you feel like that's clear enough, we can talk about those things directly.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I'll go to others first if, yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Hoxsey. Or, sorry, was there more staff report before we? Okay, thank you, please.
Having, having lived in Arinda a long time, it seems to me Arinda generally has a mishmash of styles. And one of the things, looking forward, I'm most concerned about is cohesiveness. How would you describe, you know, our current building styles? And how, how do we incorporate new buildings and create a new cohesiveness in doing that?
Yeah, Tony, um, one thing that you'll see in the document today, which is the draft version, is that we do have a building typologies, um, section. Um, and then, uh, and then specifically, uh, regulate the smaller elements of buildings. So there's, you know, in the building standards is where you're getting this, this quality. We are doing it through typologies at this point. Um, and talking about, you know, central massing and breaking down the massing into wings. Um, that's the primary technique at this point, not to actually, you know, identify a particular style or a particular look.
One of the things you mentioned, Arinda Woods, to me, that has a very seventies look to it. And I, I, I don't want us to end up with something that someone looks back at and says, oh yeah, they did a lot of that in 2026, right? It seems like the current trend is towards these more modern glass, flat roof, slanted roof, larger headers sort of style. I, I don't know how that fits in to Arinda in general. It looks like the new building going up for Bank of America looks like it's got big headers on it that to me resound of that more modern style. I, I, I just trying to understand for myself, because this is not my area of expertise, sort of how we allow for that more modern style in objective design standards, but don't mandate it.
Yeah, and I think, I think, um, right now we're doing that through looking at massing and articulation. Um, and, you know, basically giving maximums requiring, uh, you know, features of in and out that, that, uh, Tony was talking about. So we're, we're creating sort of a requirement about not having blank walls, about have, having to have, um, this modulation. Um, and that, and that's the method is, is, you know, as, as was mentioned, that those things would be discussed in, in design review. Um, and so it's being required in objective design standards to make sure that there is, uh, there is articulation. And things have a level of variety to them.
And just one more question, I'm sorry, just from, uh, uh, understanding of, of the process. We're just talking about multifamily projects at this point or multi-unit? We're not talking about single-family homes and commercial buildings, or are we?
Um, in, in a small subdivision, which is a multi-unit, um, which is an 1123 vacant possibility, that, that would, uh, trigger the objective design standards. SB nine, um, which you can have two primary units also. You know, a single-family lot by right, a subdivision by rights controlled very differently, um, would just be by right. Yeah, come on.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, Christine, you really, really confused me with what you just said.
Sure, sure.
Can you back up and go over that again?
It's, it is.
What does this apply to?
Does it apply to single, I mean, this all turns into just a nightmare after a while, trying to figure out what applies and what doesn't. So, um, does it apply to single-family homes at all?
Under certain conditions. If, if, uh, if a person, if the, if the lot system is already set, person purchases a lot and they're doing a buy right development of their single-family home, objective design standards are not part of that. Um, with SB nine, there's very clear writing in the law that requires objective design standards to apply due to streamlining.
Wait, watch this, watch this. About what proportion of the, uh, new home application, applications that have come through since SB nine have been by right versus gone through design review?
Yeah, so, so one to, one to two design reviews is what I'm hearing.
Out of how many?
So most is kind of what I anticipate the answer.
Most are SB nine, not going through design review anymore. And that is why, and you'll notice there were ADU, like, so I, I think we're having to have this conversation from ADUs to buy right, single-family lots, anything that's SB nine, which by the way is all but one or two, and condos and townhomes, is that correct?
I would say ADUs have been taken off the table. So, uh, yeah, so, yeah, so the 131 and 130, which are new, um, the budget bills, those were very clear about ADUs go through. No design review, no objective design standards, they go through. But in terms of the, in terms of the multifamily buildings. Yeah, so, so the multifamily buildings, yeah.
Just really big picture for those, I, I, I appreciate a Councilmember Hoxsey's questions because I also was, one of my questions is what are eligible residential projects? Which is identified in the staff report. So, um, ADUs, no objective design standards, no.
Design review.
Design review, right, okay.
It used to be that a certain size ADU required design review, is that not true anymore?
So I think, I think what staff is telling you is that for the state mandated streamlined ADUs.
Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Hang additional design requirements on them. But there are other things that are ADUs that I think we need to be thinking about in terms of the objective standards. Likewise, and this is a conversation I really just started having with staff. As, um, Vice Mayor Iverson pointed out, SB nine does apply to a single-family home. It doesn't have to be just duplex development. And so for that reason, it might be important to have objective standards if possible, to the extent possible.
Yeah, and, and you're not the only ones who are wrestling with the clarity, lack of clarity around this. Like every community is saying, wait, how does this work? Um, and it, it really is application dependent. If an applicant comes in under SB nine and says, my, my, um, my situation meets this criteria, and then it first has to be assessed, does it, yes or no? Um, if it does, then there's a question about, is it, is it going to go through design review? Is it going to go through objective design standards? Is it, is it ministerial, you know, so there's these tracks that happen.
Okay. Other questions?
Just a broad question, and that is, um, you know, we don't have the kind of technical background that many of the planning commissioners have. And because they had an entire study session already, I was hoping you could give us a lot more color about their input, their feedback, not just kind of the three or four bullet points, but to the extent you can help us build on where they, where they have a lot of feedback, that would be super helpful.
But before you go into the detail. No, 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 I, I would really appreciate actually that, that, uh, feedback. I did have an, another sort of elementary big picture question, two, um, two different areas. One is, and this is because during the presentation, thank you, it was really helpful for me. All of this, by the way, is extremely helpful for me. I told the study manager, I was actually really excited about this study session, so. But the architectural style standards, I know it was sort of suggested that we don't really want to do that. However, I will say this, my first home was in the Oakland Hills and it was in the Oakland Hills post-fire. And I had one of, I had a tiny little two-bedroom craftsman. Across the street from me were about five different styles on Broadway Terrace. And when you looked, walked around that neighborhood, they were all individually gorgeous, beautiful homes. Together, it was garish to me, right? And I'm not an architect and I don't know anything about this, but it was, you know, I was looking around and saying, how did this happen, right? Just from a planning perspective. So one question is, without what I understood to be under the term architectural tile, style standards, does the massing and other things solve for that? And then the second question, I'm just going to ask it because I think it's kind of related, is that, you know, there's, where does sort of, I, I understand that building codes are separate, right? But where does, where do building codes from a safety, I'm thinking climate change, I'm thinking fire safety, right? Where does that fit in with style and aesthetics, right? Because one thing we've been trying to tell folks, at least with landscaping here, is yes, you can do both, you know? And I'm, I'm, that was sort of in my head as I was reading all of this. And I was thinking about roofs and eaves and, you know.
Materials, I mean, I was thinking about materials, like I saw somewhere that for fencing, foam materials aren't allowed. But we may actually want fencing to be Trex or some fire-safe foam material in today's world because, um, wood burns, so.
Right, yeah, so like Arinda Woods with all that wood paneling and shingling everywhere. There's no way we would want something, you know, I mean, I, I, so that's the question, the big picture.
A, a couple of questions have come out. One was, what did the planning commission say? So we ran them through, um, the general questions that are in the staff report, um, to, to really sort of talk about, you know, what do you like about residential housing? What do you want to replicate? And so we're trying to get them into the mode of like identifying, do, how, is our table of contents correct? You know, in terms of the building forms, in terms of needing to really identify roof forms as a salient feature of lower-rise buildings, does this make sense? Um, and so, so we had, we really had talked to them generally about, about these multifamily, um, multi-unit developments, things like Arinda Woods, things like Arinda Grove, things like Monte Verde, you know, and sort of use those examples to say, you know, what do you like about those, what do you don't? What we were hearing was, um, they liked, um, variety, they liked uniqueness, they liked articulation. So Monte Verde and Arinda Woods, um, were favorable. Um, Arinda Grove was a little too cookie cutter. So that was, but again, those are, those are sort of general ways that's, it's, it's sort of, then we have to get into the technical elements and the dimensioning. Uh, it's hard to have that kind of technical conversation. So, um, so one of the reasons why we offered a draft that has a lot of technical information in it is that you can sort of look at those dimensions and say, is that right? Does that, you know, does that feel over-regulated? Does that feel under-regulated? And, and that, that you have to sort of, with this technical document, you kind of have to get to that detail to really test it out. So we set up the structure where we, we think we have the right, um, standard sets. We have the right articles, site, building and subdivision. Because we know there are lots, splits and small subdivisions, as well as building, massing, landscaping and site design that applicants and, you know, design review would really tackle. So we feel like we have those good. So we feel like we have those good categories. And we, and, and so I think we confirmed that with the planning commission. So that was sort of the first thing. The second thing is, in terms of really technical details, there weren't many comments on the technical details. I think there was one comment about, well, maybe the color of fencing is overregulated and maybe it's not right to have it black when it could also be brown and, and still fulfill the need to be backgrounded in the landscape, you know, that the priority was backgrounding in the landscape. So trying to pull out, you know, what are these policy issues, where, where should we be emphasizing things or de-emphasizing things? So that, that's really was sort of the total sum of the conversation. The concern, the community concerns did come up. We want to make sure that it's fire-safe. We want to make sure that it's variety, we want to make sure it feels and looks like Arinda. But in terms of like how you get there, you know, that's what we're working on, that's why it's a draft right now. And that's why we're also seeking more input from you, more input from public to say, you know, are things resonating? Are there technical topics that are missing, are there technical topics that are spot on? One thing that has come up in the interim was the question of architectural style standards. They aren't there. However, we know that in, in Wilder, there are six identified. In downtown, there was one identified. People have different feelings about that, whether that's been successful or not. But, but I think we want to really say this is the time to think about whether identifying a style, identifying a grouping of styles, if that would help with, with the objective design standards. So, yeah, so there was a little bit on what the, we discussed with the planning commission. And then there's a little bit on the architectural style standards as a potential addition.
Yeah, please.
You, you touched on it briefly, but I'm still a little bit confused. And that is, looking at this, you know, content index, can you talk a little bit more about the landscape lighting and surfaces? Because then, as we reviewed all the rest of the material, it seemed to be all about, you know, the buildings and, and so I guess I'm a little confused and or interested in what falls into objective design standards in the landscaping area?
Yeah, there are important components in landscaping. Obviously, the building often gets the most discussion because it's big and it's obvious and it's in the center of a lot. And so, and, and in terms of being able to modulate that, that's important. But in terms of really starting with the site and the layout, understanding, understanding how to organize the building related to the access routes, how to interface the, the building with the, with the public realm and not making parking in the front. That was a planning commission, you know, conversation point of saying, we prefer things that have parking in the back or that hide the parking. And that is consistent with what we're seeing, you know, as direction to applicants in this draft. There's also questions about open space, we've internally in a, a staff level with the consultants, we've had this conversation about rather than having leftover green space, you know, should there be regulation around grouping it so that it's usable green space? And that, you can actually see that in the, there's, you know, some discussion about minimum dimensions of contiguous green space to help a development understand how you could actually have a landscape space that's usable. These are all conversation points that are also policy points. So the question about, does that feel like overregulation, should an applicant be able to decide this? So we really sort of put a lot of these things into that section about requiring landscape, limiting it, we pulled things out of the Wilder handbook. We pulled things out of the, out of the Hillside design guidelines, really trying to kind of pull things in that have already been stated. So the, the question of surfaces, Wilder is very clear about there's going to be landscape that's going to be growing media. But then there's going to be paving and we want, we want certain colors, we want a brick pattern to be possible. In terms of the, the lighting, you know, not over-illuminating things is our, gets pulled into the, the standards. So there, there's a really important first moment about general site organization and all the stuff that's outside the building, and that's in the site standards section.
I guess, is it okay to start throwing in some comments, so, because it's in the spirit of a workshop, kind of just talking? One thing that is difficult, I think, is that Arinda has such really challenging topography. So Wilder was essentially all identi, you know, they all had the flat and then I, you know, it was either flat and down or flat and up. And that's how they had the articulation and it's how they were able to really control the number of design styles. But everything that comes through the planning department with single-family home lots in Arinda, they are so strangely shaped, they're so hard to build on. And so where I was just, I kept using the word flummoxed, is I came into this meeting thinking we were, we were really talking about the SB four stuff and the condos and the townhomes, and I kind of was ready for that conversation. And the more I started realizing now, we're also trying to answer all these difficult questions for any kind of single-family home, single duplex, triplex or quad on any shape of lot in any part of town. It just felt like a colossal waste of money because the fact sets are never the same twice in a row. And so, like, I, I actually think you did a wonderful job with the task, but I can't get my head straight long enough to follow these, these recommendations without getting, you know, I wear my single-family and duplex hat and I can, I understand it. And then I put on my condo and townhome hat, but I, I'm really struggling with even having this conversation with such a a, a big task in front of us.
That's, um, I, and I also, the sustainable architecture and green building with, I, I also was sort of thinking as we're doing this, is there an, is there an opportunity, can you regulate at this point? Can you have objective design standards that are sort of based on fire science and, or can you not? Is anyone doing it in the state, anyone else? That we could file from, or, I, I was just curious.
Tony, do you have examples?
Yeah.
Come on up here.
Come up, just so that we, just so they can hear you.
So it's in the minutes as well.
Yeah, Mayor, everything that, that we've done, you know, has to go through the fire and building departments ultimately. And so we, we try very hard to sort out those things that would never pass those tests. So we, we just stop there. You know, use best practices to not include things that would never pass fire building code. And then everything else is subject to the fire and building code. That's, that's the approach that we're taking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, is, is there any community that's doing sort of, I mean, Palisades, as they rebuild, for example, is there any community that's sort of going, going aspirational? I'm not necessarily saying we should, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the details of the Palisades approach. I, I wanted to add something to, a couple of the comments have been made. Vice Mayor Iverson, you were talking about the single-family houses, the number of houses and just that extra dimension to this whole project. I guess I'd just encourage you to look at it as, yes, single-family houses are involved. But as, as Christine said, only when they choose to add, use an SB nine subdivision to add another house to their lot. That's, as opposed to a single-family house requiring to go through this process.
Because I was really surprised after SB nine, I thought it was only for subdivisions, and then it seemed like every new home application managed to be an SB nine application and go through without design review, and I don't know how that happened, I just saw the pattern.
Yeah, they can add, they can add, they can subdivide and not do anything with that second lot and build a second house on the first lot. That, that's one way to do it. I don't know what applications you're getting, but you could do that. Nothing compels you, compels the applicant or obligates them to build the, the house on the second lot. It just means you, they can subdivide up to two lots and each lot can have up to two buildings, so.
Wait, so they can simply subdivide the lot but don't actually have to build the second structure, is that what?
It's my understanding that they're not obligated to build a second structure simply because they subdivided the second lot.
Oh, wow.
Nothing that we've seen says that.
Just understood that, okay. I don't know.
Well, I think everything that's been said so far is accurate. There are two parts to SB nine. One is the lot split part.
Right.
But you don't have to exercise your rights to split your lot, you can just develop the lot you have with one or two units plus ADUs potentially. So somebody can come in with a single-family home application on an existing vacant lot and take advantage of the streamlining that SB nine affords. That is why if you can develop objective standards for that situation, it might be helpful because you're limited in your ability to use discretionary design review for that kind of application.
And, and I think one of the key components, even though we are fundamentally interested in producing more housing, is that the objective design standards give you a tool to say that you are not meeting the community's requirement for design. You cannot move forward. If you do not have objective design standards, you cannot deny their application.
One thing that I would hope also is that that was the exact point that I was hoping you'd make because it also would push more people to come back in front of design review when they want to do something a little more unique or interesting. If it doesn't fit the objective design standards, then they will come to the planning commission and just have the discretionary conversation because you can always use the discretionary process. And so it's an interesting, you know, on the one hand, on the other hand, about well-designed objective design standards. Yes, make it more straightforward and more simple. But if they make it more complicated, that also means that the planning commission gets their jobs back. So it's, it's a weird time that way.
Vice Mayor Iverson, yeah, exactly. So some cities have actually said, some, some cities say, you don't meet our objective design standards, you go back around and until you do. Some cities say, if you don't meet our objective design standards, you have chosen to go into discretionary review by, by default. They've written that into, into the standard. So that hasn't been tested in the courts yet, but that's what they've done.
One thing I want to just throw out also is, even in the years that I was on planning, we went from, you know, really emphasizing natural materials, wood fences, especially see-through fences, right, no wall fortresses, and saving every tree. And as fire concerns grew, the fire department was making applicants change their plans and we were having to waive our own rules because you couldn't have it both ways. And I think one of the biggest challenges that, that you guys face is, yes, we could make everything be fire compliant, but then what you're going to have is just hardscape and, you know, little shrubs and a bunch of brick and stucco. And if what we love about Arinda today has got a lot of natural materials and a lot of landscaping, how to keep the best of things we already love? And again, not try to replicate 70s architecture, but we've got really wonderful mid-century moderns. Right? There's a lot of buildings with that, you know, do use the wood and the glass and all that. And so how do we not depart too much from what is beloved and, and do that in a, in a contemporary way? And I, I don't know the answers, but that's one of the things that when I saw some of the planning commission feedback, it's just, it's just at odds with other goals we're trying to figure out.
And that's why I brought up the whole materials question. Because I think we may have to go to more foam materials that traditionally we wouldn't have wanted, but because of the fire safety issues.
Yeah, and, and I think one thing about the objective design standards is that, that it is, it is a very precise tool in terms of having an allowed list and a prohibited list. If it is not on the allowed list, you often can't use it. So it is really important to think very carefully about the natural materials, the other materials, but also to, to have some outlets for the change in materials. This comes in around the green building materials. And I know I've worked with some communities who have said that they've often written in something that says a list to be updated regularly by staff because green building materials are changing every day. Everything's being, new things are being invented every day. And so, so there, there are some really important things around just materials. And the nuances of materials, but then also the nuances of changing materials. And, and so thinking about that in a fire safety context, thinking about that in a, you know, green building context and future climate crisis context. So materials is a very important component, that's why it's a section in our, in our standards.
New topic. And I apologize because I, again, I did kind of shut down when I got into the more technical stuff because it was very confusing. But the, the thing that scares me the most is, and I always talk about Ballard in Seattle, where, uh, single-family lots have fourplexes and they're these little towers. And so you have, you know, older single-family homes and then you have these basically condo fourplexes that are so disproportionate to the neighborhood and the lot. And I, and I noticed you said one of the ways that we can define things is about portions within the building and proportions to the, I know you can't say neighborhood context, but what you can say is that you can't be sort of, you know, this much taller than you are wide. You know, I think Drummond used to have some good examples, I'm sorry, I'm talking to you instead of talking to my peers. Where Berkeley has some like duplexes and triplexes that are indistinguishable from single-family homes because they use the depth of the lot to hide the, the bulk of the house and it just looks like every other house, you'd never know. And so that, to me, the Ballard Seattle ones are the ones that just look bizarre as you're driving around. And the Berkeley examples were ones that are, that are just, they happen to be multifamily and you'd never know. And I would love to ask if you can use rules about proportion and site design to, because we haven't had, I don't think, any duplexes or triplexes yet, but we will.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Iverson, so we use a term at Optico's called the house scale. What that means is just what the term implies. So like the building on the slide there, Chris Thiem brought up, that is, that could be duplex or a fourplex to your point, but it's a house. But the proportions of it, footprint, the height, the width, the massing, you know, they see the portion has the B on it and then the porch that goes in, all those things, all those sizes are house scale in, in their size and their measurement. As opposed to a 12-unit, a multiplex in our apartment building that has that same architecture but is bigger in footprint and maybe even taller. So there, there, to your, to your question, we routinely put in our codes that we write the dimensions for a community that is defined house scale, especially in objective standards, for the very reasons that you just stated.
Well, I appreciate, if there was one battle I could fight in tonight's conversation, it would be that if someone's got a duplex or a triplex next to them, it doesn't lower their house value. I mean, that's kind of the standard is if it looks like a condo next to a home, we didn't do our jobs.
To, I, I do want to, we're, I have one more that really is a question that sort of, and then we should go to public comment before we go into more discussion, but how do we prevent, to that point, how do we prevent the situation where you have five different, you know, whether it's, whether it's multiplex or a single-family or duplex, how do you prevent the situation where you have drastically different styles right next to each other?
Yeah, that's when you add the style chapter. And, and so, so I think one of the things, so just to use a nearby community, Concord. Concord had decided in their downtown, they would, they were going to have two styles, the Mediterranean and the Spanish revival. And so, and that was already in their design guidelines before they had to, to objective, you know, make objective standards. And so they had the, an easier question. Their question was, how do we transition that into an objective language thing because they'd already chosen? But they had chosen at some point as a planning commission that we actually want to, we want to prioritize these. So if there is, you know, a, a community interest in having a limited set of styles, which there was in Wilder, you could do that here and this one. you could do that here and this would apply citywide to these eligible projects.
I mean, I, I, okay, that I won't, I'll save the rest for discussion. Other questions, otherwise I'll open public comment.
I don't know. I'm looking at one of the figures in some of the materials, you know, massing and step backs. I'm worried almost more about the big downtown buildings and not totally changing the character of Arinda with all of a sudden, you know, buildings that we would more normally see in San Francisco or Oakland or Concord that look like a residence inn or something as opposed to what we normally kind of think of in downtown Arinda. And I don't know how we can have our design standards reflect that desire for it to be a little more original and a little less boxy and sort of massive looking.
Yeah, I think, well, there, there are limits of what, you know, this is, this is going to be designer view. So look and feel, design component. The, the developable envelope is still going to be driven through the zoning. However, that's specifically what the massing and articulation is about. Is to say, you know, you have a box. This is what you can develop. But now you have actual dimensions around when you have to move in and out, when you have to add a tower or a feature, whether you have to add porches, whether you have to add entrances. So, so it becomes that modulation and the level of modulation that breaks that box down. And that's what these are intended to do. And that's why we have a section that's about the typology. It might be a, it might be a house, it might be a multiplex. And then we have other layers to that. So then there's an articulation layer and then there's a building elements layer. So a porch, a tower, you know, so that you're getting these sort of levels of not only do you have this box, but then you have to, you have to push and pull it. And then you have to add features. So it breaks it down twice. But I don't know, Tony, if you want to add anything.
Just one thing. So I don't know that you're going to get buildings as big as, as what I'm going to describe, but maybe, maybe the technique will apply to what you're thinking about. Councilmember Hoxey. So you are all familiar with Hercules, right? The building that's down there by the bayfront, the big mixed-use building, it's an L. It's, it's the largest building down there, has non-residential ground floor. It's, it's got offices and apartments on above. If you look at it from the air, it's one continuous building, right? But from the street, they expressed four or five different buildings, the facades. And they didn't do a lot of what cities usually do, the push and pull, the upper story step backs, all those things. It's really, really effective. And I'm not saying that you should have a building that large in, in Arinda. I'm saying that technique is a technique that we advocate a lot. And it's, it's called modules. What they did there is they took something that was, it's the same building very long. And instead of simply just pushing the building back and forth, because I could show you pictures that you, they do that and you say, that's still the same building. All they did was push it back and forth and put some stuff in front to try and fake me out. But I could still see by the roof and by the thing behind, it's still the same building. So it's not that effective. But when you take a large building and you say, this 125 feet is going to look like one architecture. And then they have a recess, they do have a recess where, and it's probably about three or four feet. And then they express another one. And sometimes people will say, well, that's, that's a little Disneyland-ish. It can be if it's overdone. And I would say, without getting into specifics, there are versions of that, I'll just say, in the Bay Area in the last 10, 20 years that have done that, not as effectively as Hercules. But that technique is a, is a really good one.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if you can incorporate some charm into, you know, it's like, I, I feel like,
Yes.
We don't want Arinda to look, you know, very overbuilt, boxy, you know, every square foot built out. We want to retain some charm of the different areas and improve what is there. Question I'm trying to struck, I'm struggling with is just how we can use these objective design standards to help us achieve that.
Yeah, I know that, as Christine was saying, the, the biggest things are simple massing. And with the emphasis on simple, if you look at buildings that you tend not to like, they're, they're too complicated usually. And so, again, using that Hercules example, those facades that they expressed are very simple. They're just very clear. And you say, oh, there's one I'm looking at, there's a second one, and there's a corner one. And you turn the corner, there's another one, another one. They're very clear, they're not that complicated. There's actually very little in and out when, if you look at them closely. So I'd say simple massing. And then the other thing is to not treat house-scale buildings like big buildings. We were just advising the city yesterday very often, from the last couple of months, about the idea of bulk plane and daylight plane, those kinds of techniques, which are meant for big buildings. But to get applied to buildings in neighborhoods of houses. And then everybody's frustrated because the upper story looks completely distorted and nobody's happy. The builder isn't happy, the neighbors aren't happy because it looks weird. Yeah. So i- if you just, I guess, work with us and your, and your staff with the approach of certain techniques are for big buildings and certain techniques are for houses and house-scale buildings. And that, that is a really key, key approach to keep in mind. Otherwise, you could torture a building like that and, and, you know, in the name of massing and sculpting and then walk away and everybody's still unhappy.
Like, I, I know you're trying to, but just your point about residence inn, I, I'd love to remember that you pointed about like not trying to make whatever, big buildings to little buildings. But that's the point is trying to make a huge building look like a gigantic house. So if we can take you upon that, that was an excellent, I think, way to bifurcate the conversation.
I, I just want to make sure if we have questions, otherwise I think we'll have an opportunity for back and forth. Yes, Councilmember G.
Sorry.
Okay, Tony, this is probably for you because you have experience. This is all relatively new, right? All of this wave of this housing legislation and all these things that local communities are trying to cope with. I guess my question is, is do you have a perspective at this point of how many communities have actually implemented objective design standards? And what have the results kind of been so far? I mean, are there like already lessons learned of, oops, this was a really bad idea. It didn't work out at all. Or is it, is it just so new that, I mean, I, I, I find this, I have to admit, I find this really overwhelming once you get past the idea of the downtown. The downtown makes perfect sense to me. But once you get past the downtown and start thinking about mixing things into what are essentially currently residential, single-family home neighborhoods, then I get very overwhelmed as to like what you should do. So I'm just, I'm just curious as to what it looks like right now. You know, the whole landscape of the state in terms of where people are.
Well, certainly defer, I'll, I'll give you my experience and I'll defer to your staff's experience as well after. I, I would say, I will say that our offices work on over two dozen of these across California. I think we're up to 26, 27 now. And they're all, all the cities are implementing them, meaning they're in effect and any application is subject to them. That, that they're all doing because, you know, of all the reasons you all know. However, the, at least our research on the cities that we're working with, and this may not be, this is a 20, 25 city sample out of all the cities that are subject to it. Most of the applications currently using objective standards are density bonus projects, which tend to waive the standards, the very standards that we're all writing. Yeah, that is, that I, I mean, you asked the question, so I have to tell you. But yeah, and so it's very disappointing. And, you know, many people have tried to raise this to the state because the density bonus, just a quick parentheses here, the density bonus provision or, or the, yeah, that, that law works under the assumption, a 50-year-old assumption when it was drafted, that the rules that were in place were in the way and they were outdated rules in the name of housing production. Well, that same law today cannot tell the difference between outdated rules and very nuanced new rules that cities are adopting. And yet it's still being applied in the same way it was 50 years ago. So it's, it, and even with more force now because waivers and conditions can be, waivers and exemptions can be, exceptions, sorry, can be applied. And, and it's so, it's very perplexing, but we're, we're assuming that that's going to get fixed at some point.
Any other questions before I open public comment?
No.
Okay. Then I would like to call public comment on item H1. I have no speaker cards. Are there any members of the public who would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Thank you.
I'm curious about like the process.
I can continue the discussion.
Yes. Like what, what's our, what's, what's our process? We're having this discussion now. What, what, what's our objective and what's our, what's our process to figure this out? Because I think certainly well beyond the scope of my understanding. I'm not an architect. I'm a lawyer, I can read stuff, but, you know, I, I, I just, I'm not sure how we're supposed to proceed to figure out what we should do.
Yeah, I'm also struggling with how to give meaningful feedback. I mean, beyond thank you for the education, this does look good. You know, I am still concerned about how we don't get. I, I'm very concerned because I, when, I don't think I understood till tonight that this could apply to a single-family home because they could continue to, I, I understood that you could, you don't have to actually split the lot per se. You can simply buy, build a second unit, but I thought you actually had to build it for, for this to apply. I didn't realize that.
Well, the, the sim, yeah, the simple way of thinking about it is to say that today, you know, a single, a new unit, a new single-family home would go through designer view. Now, if it tracks under SB nine and a new single-family unit shows up on this former single-family home, now it's got two single-family homes, it now goes through objective design standard. So that, you know, so that, so that's why having a house as, and a, and understanding the modulation of a house and the standards around a house is as important as understanding it for a multiplex building. Yeah.
And I might add to that, that it's important to have objective standards for single-family subdivisions. Right? Whereas historically, we've had wide discretion over the design of a subdivision, the layout of the lots, all of those things. That is changing with some of the laws that you've had described to you tonight.
Right. So, so I just want to just point everybody back to the staff report has sort of five areas that I think staff was interested in getting feedback on. Features from existing projects, what you consider high quality. The most important design standards that you think should apply to multifamily unit and multifamily residential developments. And then most important two things or design standards you think should be included. What's least important? And are there any topics or standards that are missing? So that's sort of the feedback, I think, in those five questions. Christine, do you have those five?
And we also put them in here so that you can look at them while you think about it. Find that's often helpful. So. Yeah, and, and these are, these are a little variation on what the planning commission tackled, but very similar. And so that, you know, that question of, we know it's now applying to multifamily, multi-unit residential developments. We have some of those examples already built in Arinda. From what's already built, what are you liking? What are you not liking? What should the objective, objective design standards emphasize?
How does the answer to this tie in with what we were looking at earlier in terms of form-based versus, I guess, use-based? In other words, when I think about what the communities I value, it's, it's, it's both, right? It's being able to have a mix of housing overall in the community so that we do have places for folks to downsize to. We do have housing that is, you know, I, I mean, I think Arinda, I, I don't know. I think our, our median value now is like 1.5 or two mil. I mean, it's pretty high, right? So having places that are, you know, more affordable than that, certainly, right? It's hard to even call it affordable. But so that's one value. And that, I think, was more along the lines of sort of the operational aspect.
Yeah, I, I mean.
For use even, right? But then aesthetically, I mean, what, what I don't want is to have what we had in the Oakland Hills, whether that's applicable to single-family or to multifamily, which is, you know, grand, super modern, contemporary, right next to like Mediterranean, right next to castle. I mean.
By the way, that's what Wilder has, you know that, right? I mean. That is, and they actually command that. They say the modern goes next to the Spanish mission goes next to the craftsmen. So like.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's sort of, it works in Wilder, it doesn't work. I drive on Broadway Terrace, you know, it, it's sort of, it doesn't work in that neighborhood. And so I don't know how.
But I mean, we already have in Arinda.
Well, so, so I think that one of the things that comes up is, is that you, that Arinda Woods has a certain look. It has a certain style.
Yeah.
And it's different than Arinda Grove, which is more of a neocolonial. And so, so, and that was brought up by the planning commission too of, of like, they're two different looks. And then there's a variety question on top of that. And so, you know, and, and even Monte Verde, but that's also has a different look because it's a different building type. And so, yeah, so all of those questions, I did want to just note that the objective design standards are primary, well, they are fundamentally look and feel. Development envelope is still determined through zoning. So again, it's replacing designer view. So we only have control over the look and feel.
You know, I'm not sure how to answer this question even because I can tell you what I like and what I don't like. I'm sure we can all do that. Is that high quality?
Okay. Yeah, and, and in the case of the planning commission, I did actually just poll each commissioner. We, we can do a similar, a similar, you know, if you had to answer this question, you know, Vice Mayor Iverson, what would you answer? Or you can have a conversation.
I don't think our existing multifamily is super indicative of what we hope to do going forward. So, um, you know, I really like the, just the fact that they are townhome communities because they're, you know, what I always say is naturally, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing in that they're not rent-controlled. I mean, I know there's a little bit at Arinda Grove, but the fact that they're, that they are a semi-detached structure, I think it serves a lot of families who love and need them. But I would agree, I think Arinda Woods is, is, I find the most beautiful. And natural materials right now are kind of a no-no. So everything I love about Arinda Woods may not be replicable.
I mean, I, when Arinda Grove first went in, I was skeptical about it. But I really, I think it's turned out beautiful. I think it's turned out nice. So I, I wouldn't put it as something undesirable. I think it's a, a good balance in general, you know, to have sort of courtyards or open spaces, to have housing that creates sort of a sense of community like that aesthetically, I, I like. But I think Arinda Woods is a lovely community, but it's, it's also very, there's a lot of space there, right? For a multifamily or multi-unit developments and it's very spread out. I think that the units provide a lot of privacy, which is maybe desirable to a lot of folks because they feel like single-family. I mean, they, they are, but they also feel, you know, I, I don't, I think living there, you, you have that same, it's just a lot of privacy. But I, I also, so when I'm thinking about desirable places for multi-unit residential developments, I'm thinking about other, a lot, we don't have that many here.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, we were just using some.
You know, there's, you know, I think, I think actually sort of the residential areas of Berkeley, it was said, have done a beautiful job in, in weaving, really doing that missing middle, right? Where if you go into North Berkeley, you have, you have single-family homes and then you have a fourplex and it's got that same sort of scape and look. I also think that, you know, Rock Ridge where you've got the, and, and Carmel and places. I also think that, you know, Rock Ridge where you've got the, and, and Carmel and places like that, where you have more density are really appealing. And I'm not a fan of the multi, the different styles on Broadway Terrace, as you've heard. So that's what I would say. Councilmember G.
Well, um, I, I certainly have always thought that, um, you know, Arinda Woods is really, really nicely done. But again, just like the vice mayor said, a lot of why people respond well to it is probably all the reasons why you can't do that anymore. But I, I, I have always appreciated that they worked really hard to blend it all sort of into the sort of natural landscape. So, so I certainly think that kind of the scale and the, you know, is really important. Amazingly, I mean, I remember the knockdown, dragout, you know, fights over Monte Verde. And I actually think it's a beautifully well-done building. I like how it's, you know, it's articulated. I like, um, you know, its color and how it, it was again, meant to sort of blend in really well. I mean, when I look at that building and I remember all of the knockdown, dragout fights about how it was going to destroy Arinda, I mean, I just don't see it at all. I think it's a very nice looking, uh, building. So again, I think its features, you know, were very well done. I never thought of Arinda Grove as, as, um, not being quite, you know, fitting in or whatever. Cause again, I thought it, I've always kind of thought, and I've been in quite a number of the units and been in the complex from people that have lived there. And, um, you know, I, I think in many respects, it's, it's a pretty nice community. I would say the biggest issue that stands out relative to the rest of the community is the color. Again, it, it, it stands out because it kind of looks like what the mayor is talking about. To me, it's like the, okay, everything's nice and brown and natural and nature colors, and then it's blue. So, um, but, um, but again, I, um, there's not a lot to, to look at. And I think our single family homes, once you get past Wilder and, and a few other places that were very like well, well-planned, everything else I consider, let's see. What do you, how do you describe 1950s mishmash? Um, so. But somehow it's all become very treasured over the years.
Design book calls it Arinda eclectic and it's a defined style.
I would say there was a picture in the draft that you sent out in the materials of a, a development that had a side court. And it's sort of like Mediterranean with, um, red roofs and, I don't know. It, it, it just, it looks attractive, like a different way of doing townhouses because it's not terribly tall and it's, it, it's, things are tucked in at different angles. And, um, it's Mediterranean. I like the building going in in Lafayette. That's brand new, modern.
War court.
Trader Joe's. Yeah, Trader Joe's. Some people might not. But, um, I, I, I am not a design expert. I like about the, uh, Arinda Grove is the fields and the central area of common space for people to use. We see a lot of kids playing, a lot of soccer games, a lot of playgrounds. That, I think that's a really nice feature and, um, something that would be nice to see in other developments. If we get to that point, I, I do have concerns about anything we do not looking too dated in the future and trying to be more timeless and elegant than necessarily trendy. So you're going to go back and say, oh yeah, they built that in 2025, 26. I don't think Arinda has a specific style that we can claim our own. And I think most of our single family homes were 1950s ranchers. And then people have added on and they've done all sorts of things to them where they've torn them down and built new ones or whatever. So I, I think that the general single family housing stock is quite diverse and, um, and changing all the time based on what new owners want to do when they move in. So I, I feel like my concerns, I expressed them earlier, are just about sort of cohesiveness and trying to create particularly in the downtown, the look and feel we want, that it doesn't look like a big built-up city and it has some charm to it and is inviting. And people want to come there to sit and have coffee and go to the shops and, and, you know, maybe have a nice condo up above. But I, 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 I'm not the right person to ask how you, how you make that happen.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that this conversation actually has been really helpful because not only discussing, you know, the viewpoints on these three developments, but also bringing in Rock Ridge, bringing in Lafayette, you know? That helps us, that helps our consultant team think about, you know, where should those pictures come from? What, what sort of things should we show, um, in those, in those elements? So that's great. Question number two was, given that Title 17 zoning contains development standards. So this is the development envelope. That's going to still apply. So the question was, uh, what design standards, what look and feel components are most important to pair with the zoning? And that can also be what you also saw in the draft, you know, what's, what sort of stood out. We're gonna, we're gonna talk specifically about the draft in a moment.
Are you asking out of the table of contents, basically?
What do? Yeah, yeah. Sort of what are, what are the, what are the key component, um, design standards? And it can, it can be, um, it can be a section, but it could also be an individual design standard. It doesn't have to be.
I mean, I would, I would reiterate the one, if I said if there was one battle I can fight tonight, it's that proportionality. And that if you're in a single family home part of town, that it blend with the single family homes, you know, if you're at one of the church sites, you can look like a multifamily. So I thought that your suggestion on that was, um, very helpful. And I, I would, the other thing I would say is, and I don't know how to say what we don't want, but you know, whenever people from the public, we get the fear speech, it's about, um, those sort of production, cheap material, you know, they're blocky, they're cheap. And they use bright colors instead of authentic style or nice materials. And so I don't know how to say what we do want, but we definitely know what we don't want. And it's the, it's that sort of stack and pack brightly colored, two-square, you know, it's not modern. It's just a cheap square.
Yeah.
And so I, however you can help us do that, but I feel like you.
All of those in the draft. Okay, great. Thank you.
I mean, yeah, I agree with that. I'm just also really worried about. I'm, I'm, I understand the desire for uniqueness, but to me it is important that things work together. Right? And so, um, as to whether or not that is art, architectural style, or whether it's the massing, or however it's done in an area, right? And so one of the places you showed us, I think it was Santa Barbara, had different zoning for diff, I mean, different.
Styles.
Styles for different areas. I think that makes sense because it, it allows for some variation, but not too much in an area. But, you know, I have been told I can be too matchy-matchy, so.
I guess I would ask, does this, but this include things like we were talking about? Like the, um, you know, the front, um, or the entrances should be street-facing and the parking should be in the back? And does it include things like that? Because again, I think those, again, we have such, we have so many. And of course, this exists with our existing housing stock. We have so many crazy lots that are so strangely shaped. And, um, I guess one of the things I would worry about is especially if you're trying to blend this in, in mix it in with other single family homes, that, you know, I wouldn't want to see it turned in a strange way on the lot. Or I wouldn't want the parking to be in the front or, I mean.
Dylan, what was, what I thought was so interesting on that subject is that Arinda Grove, tried to have the garages all together and, and to be really sort of, um, you know, easy to access. And then all of their front doors face the back of the lot. And so it's, it's interesting because it works so well for biking and driving and, but there's no front door. And so I, I, it's fascinating about how to get that correct.
Yeah, no, and I think the draft you have today emphasizes the public realm. It emphasizes porches and the fronts of buildings. It also emphasizes placing through the site design standards, um, placing parking behind. So I think a lot of those elements are captured that you're talking about. But it's good to hear them reiterated and, you know, we're heading in the right direction.
Councilmember Hoxsey, do you want to?
I don't think I have anything else to add on Site 3 with what we've discussed.
Um, and this, these questions were really to get into the heart of the document. Um, and it, it doesn't require an intensive reading, but it does require like a, you know, as you were looking through it, as you were reviewing it, are there two topics or design standards that like struck you? Because that's a sort of a good litmus test of like, these things, I, I, I think they're really great. I think it's great to see them here, or wow, that struck me as, I'm not sure how, how helpful that is, you know? So, so if there's anything, you know, that's the, this third question, um, is in that draft document, which is 100 pages long. Are there two topics or two design standards that are the ones that stand out, that are the most important?
Anyone want to go?
Well, I, I think for me, the, and we've mentioned it multiple times. It's the, it's the articulation or the massing in a way that makes things not look blocky. And, um, I, I agree with the vice mayor, you know, things that, you know, like, whatever the part of the community looks like, it wouldn't look right to me to have things that are just, you know, straight up, um, you know, uh, blocks without, you know, some, some massing, some articulation that pays attention to scale. And, um, I, I don't know if it's allowed to do what Tony said about how scale as opposed to something else. But I, to me, that would be really important.
I mean, what? I had forgotten, but that if we're going to be talking about sub, you know, uh, like, you know, 30 lot subdivisions, that is one place that I feel like, and earlier you mentioned our hillside development ordinances and all the things that we do when we get applications for hillside lots. You know, something like the, the controversial thing on our consent calendar. You know, if people are going to be doing retaining walls, I remember at Wilder, there were so many discussions about, uh, you know, no more than four feet for one retaining wall. And then they had to be spaced out so that you, you know, where people are building and challenging lots. We don't get the big castle wall fortresses. And then, you know, nothing grows on that for 10 years. And then like even Wilder looked pretty weird for a long time. So, um, that would be one thing is to, is to bring in all of those hillside development, things that we've already figured out and make sure that they get codified.
Yeah. And I was going to ask Tony, are you getting what you need out of the comments?
And then some perhaps?
Sad part.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue the meeting to, I'm, want to move to continue the meeting to 10:30? It's 9:54 right now.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tony opposed? So that passes unanimously. The pictures you showed us of different, um, structures, I guess, in, in the packet, the.
Yeah, th- those are probably building types.
The building types, right. Most of them did have a sense of walkability and setbacks. And I, I, I find that aesthetically pleasing and also I think enhances community in a great way. So the courtyards, the front, I, I, you know, I thought these were all appealing. The side court, the courtyards, the, um, were much more appealing than, for example, there's a picture of a multiplex mall, right? That was more apartment, like old school LA apartment structures, where you have the buildings that are pretty close to the sidewalks. And then you have a courtyard inside, you know, with the pool, like that classic LA look. That, I think, is not as appealing as where you have a little more landscaping and a little bit setback in the front, right? Or you have a courtyard worked into the side. So it's just that it feels more connected to the sidewalk and the housing feels like it gives a little more privacy and a little more independence, even though you can have the same number of units. I don't know if that's setbacks.
I think that whole chapter on building frontages is really important. What, what you're seeing from the street, uh, because that's sort of the feel we're all used to is the tree-lined streets and we don't have a lot of sidewalks. And it's not, you know, it's, it's more rural feeling. Um, and so trying to maintain sort of the green space at the street level.
Actually, can I ask a question? Because I was just thinking the opposite. As I was thinking, for anything where we get a fresh start, can we require sidewalks? Because we always hear about, you know, how nobody can walk anywhere in Arinda because we're all going to get killed. Is there, is this an opportunity to do better? And so it's so interesting that I was just going to ask the opposite question.
Well, I, I guess, and it depends where. I was particularly thinking about the building facades and frontage on, on sort of downtown, which is different to me than, um, in a neighborhood, right?
Yeah, so.
Want sidewalks down.
I want sidewalks, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I do want to clarify a couple of things. One, one is that this is citywide, downtown is under a different, different set of objective design standards. So keep that in mind. Um, and then also that objective design standards are principally the private zone. The interface is certainly with the public realm, um, but there are other tools to deal with the public realm and the question of sidewalks. So, and I don't know if OSA would have a comment on that at all.
Sorry, I was stuck on the first comment, which is that these are citywide. So it's true, we've adopted or we're working to adopt objective design standards for the commercially zoned parts of downtown. But I believe these would apply to the residential multifamily properties downtown, which include the Santa Maria site. Okay. So we do have some, this would touch the downtown a little bit.
Yes.
Sorry, what was your, what was your question?
And then the other component was objective design standards are principally the private, um, limits of private property. Certainly the interface of the public realm, but they don't necessarily require, have requirements around the public realm. The question.
Oh, I see what you're saying, but would these will be subdivision standards, I believe.
So you're right.
So the subdivision standards would include what sort of street amenities the city is going to be requiring, which includes lighting, sidewalks, where the driveways go, you know, subdivision standards.
Okay. So yeah, no, that's an important distinction. Thanks.
I mean, I, hey, agree, Brandon, lighting and sidewalks are nice in new divisions. We would want that.
Yeah, I guess I just, any, anytime we get a bite at this particular apple, I'm going for walkability. But, but I would, you know, if there's a church site and they're building on the portion of the site where we can get a sidewalk built on the front, it, you know, it just, I was thinking about the, the presentation had some very pretty things about how the neighborhood and then the, the sidewalk and then the green. But I agree, an individual home site, it would be silly. And so I defer to you experts to figure out what we mean by all that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, for example, St. John's just built a new hall building for the church. Yeah. And there's no, there could have been a walking path there and that, there is none. So something like that, would we want a walking path even though the rest of the neighborhood doesn't have one? I mean, it would still, I think, be desirable.
Sidewalk in front of one property, but not the whole street.
Like how do, I don't know how you deal with it from a design perspective, but.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good consideration for us. Thanks.
We would want, I would favor walkability generally, but it, it would look weird if it's just in one building.
Right.
Yeah, but that's maybe too nitty-gritty. We should probably, should we move on?
The next question is, um, or actually, did I, yes. Okay. So the next question is the same. We may not need to spend time here because you may have answered it by telling us the most important. This is the least important. If there's anything that struck you in the draft, that you said, why is this here? This is not necessary. Um, this is a great time to mention it. Otherwise we'll move on to the next.
I mean, I, I do want to make sure that with things like fences and roofs, we aren't ruling out, or we're not. I want to make sure that we are not excluding things that are fire safe because they are not natural products, right? Like, because design standards. Like, because design standards have changed, but if someone wants to put a steel roof on their house right now, I think we need to let them. So I feel really strongly about that.
The draft allows composites.
Is that sealed? Okay.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, I actually looked for it and I thought I saw it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, yeah, we definitely are sort of looking into that and have started like putting a couple of things in that address that. But I think it's not as full, as full, because this is an early draft, as it could be. And we heard that from the planning commission as well.
I mean, I would, I would like, it might make sense for staff to have. I don't know if we could have a conversation with Chief Isaacs about, about it before the final.
And are we building zone zero into the design standards so that there's five feet around all the buildings?
Yeah, yeah, no, we're looking, we're balancing that against the landscape standards right now. I think, I think that was actually one of the questions we were talking about internally of saying, you know, we've talked generally about landscape, but like, what about zone zero?
We have to incorporate, I think. Well, and very strongly, we have to incorporate zone zero in throughout the.
Well, and sometimes it is, it's as simple as saying it prevails. And so it is thus incorporated, but sometimes it's important to, to describe what you want the applicant to do.
Right. I think it also affects roofs and eaves.
It does, eaves.
Just to ask, I, I really worry, we've seen our last beautiful fence and all the fences we're going to see from now on are going to be black chain link and
or Trex.
And plastic composites. And I just, I'm so worried. And so I, I don't know the answer, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask you guys to be super thoughtful about how we strike that balance, because it's always been wood required because it's beautiful.
There's a lot of alternative.
High quality.
Alternative materials out there now that are very attractive.
Even wood materials that are highly pressured and treated in certain ways to make them fire resistant.
Make sure we get it right.
Yeah, no, no, no. So I mean, some some more exploration of that and.
Okay, great, yeah. Fences, fences is an important component. And then we also have a section with, that are more about building materials. So this question five is, are there any topics or standards missing? Certainly, we have talked about architectural style standards. I think, you know, point blank question, should we introduce architectural style standards?
I'll offer my opinion. I have come around to the feeling of no. And the reason I say that is because right now, the community outside of Wilder and Arinda Woods and the very planned areas, there is no such thing. And so I think it actually would look weirder over time to have like a certain style. And then it would sort of look like you could tell everywhere that was, you know, infilled or whatever. I, I, I just think we're not a community that has a really distinctive style. I mean, like, I can understand why Santa Barbara did what they did, because it makes perfect sense in that, you know, in that community, but I don't think our community looks like that. So I, I, I think actually saying you have to have one or two different styles, and again, I'm talking about outside the downtown.
Yep.
I just think would look odd over time, but that's my opinion.
I agree with you, in particular, since we have so many styles already expressed in so many different parts. Arinda and people's aesthetic is changing, right? Depending on how old you are, you might really prefer something much more modern than I would prefer. Or I, I just, I would hate to rule out sort of that change, just because it's not what I particularly favor.
But the mayor wants.
No, I just, I just, here's the thing, we are. So this, this would though apply to multifamily units in downtown. And we are trying to encourage, you know, we, we might reasonably anticipate some change in downtown. And so even if things have been, you know, with all over the place until now, all over the place with single family homes is different from all over the place, straight up against each other. And that actually, around, you know, my first home was mid-century modern. My sec, my home I live in now is, I think, Mediterranean, right? And it's, it all kind of works because we have these larger lots that are spread apart in a lot of places. When you have, you have structures right up against each other. You know, I'm not saying that they have to be all the same style. I'm not, I'm not going for Disney, you know, downtown Disney or anything, but I'm going, well, actually, those aren't, those are kind of all different. I am going for some, how do you, how do you make sure they just all work together when you can't go through design review? And that's, that's a question I'm struggling with. So I'm really split on.
One thing I would throw out, though, is that applicants are smart, right? They're putting a bunch of money in. And so I, maybe I'm, you know, an optimist, but I like to think that somebody designing a building, you know, any individual homeowner, you're going to get some nutty stuff here and there, you know, the castle fantasy. But I've got to believe with commercial buildings, and that's not what we're doing right now. But I've got a relatively high degree of confidence that you might get a modern or Mediterranean, but you're not going to get a castle. And I, what I have seen is that production home builders, and I think the final phase at Wilder had a production home builder who built a whole bunch of things at once and kind of what they tend to do is use applique and bright colors on very similar buildings more so than they actually make them different from each other. So my fear is less that they are actually different, that they're all the same and pretending to be different. So that's, that's why I would actually follow the kind of the mood of the day, which is, let's try not to over engineer it, because then sometimes it's the be careful what you wish for.
Okay.
I love, I love harmonious design. I love it. But I feel like if we get it wrong, we get it more wrong.
And I did want to add that through the building typologies and through the massing and articulation, we are, we are creating a structure and a system that applicants are feeding into. So there, there is some control in that regard that's a stylistic.
Yeah, you did point out how that, that can control it in a, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If I could just say one thing, this isn't a one and done opportunity. I mean, if you, if you adopt something that's less restrictive now theoretically, and you want to be, you start seeing things and you don't like the way that things are being executed, you could add architectural styles in the future. Right? Won't help the things that have already been constructed, but you could potentially address it.
I have one question and something that used to get brought up a while ago is anything about minimum number of bedrooms so that if we get multifamily buildings, we don't get too many studios in ones relative to family sized. Or at least enough mix of family relative to small units. Is that a thing? Is that something people are still talking about?
It's not a look and feel. Usually it's, there's usually a family guideline or requirement, family, family. So it's the three-bedroom apartment, the elusive three-bedroom apartment. So City of Maryville has that, that there's a family requirement, so you have to have one or two units. But that's usually in the, in the development side of things, not in the design review side of things.
But would that not be part of the objective design standards that we would say a multifamily building needs to have a mix of unit offerings, at least that there's a certain proportion of, of larger accommodated? And I end the word families charged, but I mean, more cohabitants per unit than small boxes?
I don't think that's a design, but Tony, help me out here.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Robertson, the city of Santa Barbara actually has a program called average unit density. And they have it on certain corridors to do what you're talking about. And they talked about going away from it and they studied other alternatives. And after a lot of study, they came back early last year and are, I think they're enhancing it, but they're keeping it. That they're, they're not taking it away. And what it does is it requires a mix. So as the density goes up, you can only achieve more, more density that you're allowed to have, that you're entitled to have by the, by the general plan as you vary the unit sizes.
But is that something that's in a designing guidelines format?
It's, it's in the standards. It's, yeah.
In objective standards?
It's not in the objective standards because it was already a standard. But so if you don't have it, could you put it in the objective standards? Sure, I guess you could, but it's, it's a, it's a way to implement the density. So it's, it's a program that exists. Where it should live is a question for your, your, your city, your city staff and your city attorney. But it, it does exist.
I would only throw that out to my count. The reason I asked that is because the opportunity zones are the ones that were intended by HCD reviewing our plan as the best suited for affordable housing. And if we get affordable housing, I'd be very happy to see it accommodate families who could take advantage of some of Arinda's opportunities. So I, I would be pleased to see that. I don't think it's, I think it'll happen naturally, but it was something I've always wanted to.
I would just say on the affordability side, and I think you probably know this. I mean, a lot of times the projects that we get have a particular type of slant. So they're either senior housing or they're workforce housing and that sort of drives that maybe the bedroom types and sizes. And then there's opportunities for family housing. And I think those each individually have opportunities for state funding that could be unique based on the tax credit they're going for.
That's a great point. I withdraw the comment because you're right. I think the, the financing they go for will drive that much more than adding a different thing they're trying to comply with.
And can I ask a question about setbacks? We haven't talked at all about setbacks, but you know, when you have a single family home and you're going to remodel, floor area ratio and setbacks become a big, you know, issue on the lot and what you can do.
And just. Councilmember Hoxsey, can I have you put your microphone on the other side? We're having a, I'm sorry, having a difficult.
I am sorry.
That's, that's much better.
I, I was wondering about setbacks and how they fit into these design standards.
Yeah, setbacks are, will be in Title 17 still, so still, still that, and that will still apply. And so, yeah, so that, so the development will still be required to observe those.
To the existing setbacks we have now?
Yep.
Thank you. I mean, the, sorry.
That's of course, subject to SB nine and ADU laws, which reduce the degree to which the city can require setbacks.
Yeah, there are, yeah. And so the, the ADU four-foot rule is a change in the setback.
Okay. Thank you.
In terms of what's missing, I've already talked about it, but I didn't, I, I think articulating fire safety, you know, keeping in mind and articulating that is important in a document, just like we're articulating now environmentally friendly stuff. Because it's all related to me.
And I liked your comment about walkability and just sort of making any complex of new homes have a walkable, you know, sort of community feel to it, I think is important.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, that is our final question. Thank you for, for, you know, listening to the presentation and then giving great feedback.
Christine, can you just articulate what comes next?
Yes. We've been sort of using this impromptu, there is actually, there we go. There are some next steps. So we have a draft, it's a working draft. You can even see placeholders that say change this picture, you know, refine this. We will take what we've learned in the study sessions with the planning commission and the city council. We will import this in, so we'll be in a revision phase. We had plans to have a winter draft final that might get pushed a little bit. But spring 2026, summer 2026, we're looking forward towards moving ahead with adoption. And again, the, you know, many of these laws are active now. And so it is sort of timely to, to get the, the design concepts and the, the local look and feel codified. So thank you very much for this discussion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all to staff for a really extensive presentation, informative. Okay, next, we have council member reports. And do we have any council member reports? I know we're going to try to get through the rest of this pretty quickly. But.
You have a short one?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Walmart and the school bus board met and we are up 3% this year with 1,452 students riding the school bus. We have, we're going to be on track for 1.3 million in parent contributions this year. And we've been very successful in using some Measure J money to keep the increases to the parent fees to an absolute minimum, despite the fact that our costs in our contract went up quite a bit. And then based on current ridership, the school bus is going to eliminate approximately 670,680 vehicle trips this school year. So really, really happy with the numbers.
Great. Yes, go ahead.
I'll just give a quick, I already let staff know, but last week at the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board meeting, the board did authorize staff to release the RFP for the countywide evacuation study.
Oh, good.
So based on the timeline, I would expect that the consultant would probably be on board by late spring of next year. And the project study would probably start in probably sometime second quarter of '26.
Is it still trying to do everything in the world?
No, I think the scope has been improved quite substantially, but I still think it's, it's going to be a very challenging study, but I think that the staff did improve the approach to it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I wanted to mention the League of Cities Conference down on Long Beach. So it was great to attend. And I did think that the session on small cities trying to form their own caucus was interesting and something we should think about participating in, in the future.
Yeah, we I went to, what did I go to? I went to a couple seminars at League on emergency preparedness and messaging and communications. And you have shared sort of what I learned out of that with, with our city manager, but also was pleased to say that the advice they were giving generally was sort of a lot of it we're doing in that it was all about relationships and get to interact with your community members at, you know, your electeds and your counterparts on the staff level and on the elected level, get to know one another before an emergency happens. So folks are from different jurisdictions that have been through emergencies. One of the things that, out of a panel that came out of someone who, I think it was a council member from Malibu, was saying that in the emergency, it is really important for electeds to be there to listen to constituents and to hear feedback and to support their city manager and staff. And so, which I'm sure we would all do, but that was sort of reinforced, right? Sometimes people, it's important to sort of know your roles ahead of time. But it was a great, great opportunity for a lot of networking. An East Bay Division owner was sworn, Gabe Quinto, who's a council member in El Cerrito, was sworn in as the Cal Cities President, which was really cool. And so we were all at that. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is we had a meeting with the second working group of that Senator, the Senator Grayson Working Group, the East Bay wildfire safety master plan working group meeting was Friday. I went with Assistant City Manager Doug Alissio. And we discussed a few things. Senator Grayson discussed the state budget and was really clear about saying there's nothing available now, but that we should plan for the '26, '27 state budget and invited all the jurisdictions present to pull together requests for funding in anticipation of '26, '27. And that included descriptions of the item effort amount and what the request would avoid in terms of other costs and impacts. And, you know, encouraged us to very much work in conjunction with other jurisdictions in a collaborative way. in a collaborative way. The second thing that was discussed was asking us about regulations that we might want to see changed and with a particular emphasis on SEQA and, and how SEQA or other state or local regulations have impeded fuel mitigation efforts or have been barriers to community safety. We heard from a Berkeley council member, Blackaby, on the Berkeley's Ember Ordinance, and there was an extensive slide presentation on that, and they are doing a lot of what we're doing. It was very reminiscent of sort of the presentations that the SSTOC gets sometimes. And then there was also, um, there's an effort to sort of map within the East Bay all the fuel mitigation efforts that are happening. So that was sort of the update. And with that, if there's no more council members' reports, we'll turn to the city manager.
Okay, so I'll just cover off on a, a couple items this week. We have trunk or treat on Thursday, a sold out event, so that's very exciting. We have multiple sessions going on for the community. So if you are in the area and you want to come by, we'd love to have you. Light Up Arinda will be on November 6th. That'll be in the plaza in front of the library. It's also the same night as your mayor's conference, so we'll have to work out timing for that. December 5th is Winter Fest, just a reminder that that event is also happening as part of the holiday season activities. Other things to note, we have an upcoming parent education night next week on October 29th, and we'll be working with the school district on helping to promote the message. We, uh, tomorrow and Thursday, and I just received this notification late today, is that the MTC, MTC is holding TOC policy discussions, and those will be happening over a two-day period, really, I think, designed to help bring the current board up to speed about the history of the TOC policy and where they might be looking to, and put in some flexibility for local agencies. So worth paying attention to. I can forward you that if you'd like. It's also available on their website, and we'll try to figure out how to pay attention so we have no time to send staff there, given that it's tomorrow and the next day.
Yeah, we, we just heard about this today, right?
Yes, this afternoon.
Kind of frustrated by that.
Let's see, we've got upcoming committee meetings. Infrastructure Committee will be next Monday, the 27th, and then the MOFD two by two will be on November 5th, and I believe we have the school two by two, November 19th. That concludes my report.
Yeah. There's also one ribbon cutting that the chamber is doing, La Marinda Atelier in Theater Square on November 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, if you want more details on that. Maybe our city clerk can send it to everybody. Okay. It is two Theater Square, Suite 112. Item K is matters initiated? Are there any other, any matters initiated tonight? Okay. Hearing none. It is 10:25 and we are adjourned. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Thank you all.